I'm going to call the meeting to order. Are you guys, are you guys ready? You guys ready? Okay. I'm just going to make sure. Okay. Okay, may we have the roll call then? Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Bagby.
Present.
And student liaison.
Here.
Thank you. That's a hot mic. I realize I neglected to ask the most important person if everyone was ready. We're ready. We're ready. So with that, we will move on to agenda review.
May there be no changes to the agenda?
Okay, great. And, uh, do we have, let's see, just a second, sorry. Thank you. It's not on here. A little below. You're right. Thank you. Check, check, check. All right. Actually, could we have the student liaison lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sorry, it's a little distracting. I think my mic is really hot tonight, so I'll try to find the right, the right range. And we have a report out of closed session, please.
Mayor, there were no reportable actions taken tonight. Council considered a few items and provided staff direction.
Great, thank you. And conflict of interest declarations. Any, any this evening? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to agenda review again. And I think, I think it will probably remain the same, no changes or deletions, okay? And so at this time, we will move on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on an item listed on any, on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium when advised by the mayor and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized. Would anyone like to come forward regarding an item that is not on the agenda? For instance, Tony. For example.
For example, there we go. So, good evening, Mayor Bagby, and the members, distinguished members of Cloverdale City Council. Boy, I love Cloverdale. It's so fun coming up here. I'm a resident of Santa Rosa. I'm also the secretary and treasurer of the Mississauga County Scholarship Program, general manager of Sonoma County Airport Express, which happens to be the primary sponsor of the Mississauga County Scholarship Program. With us tonight, we have our Mississauga County Tyler Avery Lewis and our Mississauga County outstanding teen Pinkale Ponza. You'll be hearing from them shortly. To invite the members of council to our 73rd Annual Mississauga County Scholarship Competition, taking place on Saturday, March 2nd, 7:00 PM at the Spreckles Performing Arts Center in Roner Park. We've got a number of just incredible young ladies that'll be competing for scholarship money. Every single contestant walks away with scholarship money for future education. As elected official, you'll be joining about, probably 20, close to 30 elected officials from throughout Sonoma County, and you'll be introduced from the stage. You'll stand up and wave. And a couple of aspects of the Mississauga County program I'd like to let you know about. Again, we are the longest-running program under the Miss California organization. Seventy-two years, heading into our 73 years. Every year, for that amount of time, we've had a new title holder, which is quite incredible. When you think about the number of the programs, they've taken a year off or so. They've changed executive directors and committees, but not us. We've been going out for 72 years. Our program is recognized and respected for having our title holders so embedded into the community. Typical Mississauga County makes about 130-something appearances. Tyler Avery, our current Mississauga County, she's about 150. She'll be setting the mark for the most appearances in one year. And our Mississauga County's outstanding teen typically about 60 appearances. Our current Mississauga County's outstanding teen, I think she's around 80, so she's set the mark as well. So, a couple of young ladies standing behind me. Again, we'd love to have you at the competition. We don't have anyone from Cloverdale this year, unfortunately. I'll be totally transparent with you on that. But, yeah, we did last year, and hopefully next year. And, but whoever our new title holders are, they'll be representing all of Sonoma County, including Cloverdale. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Oh, yes, can you sign in? And ladies, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Go ahead and come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Pinkale Ponza. I'm Mississauga County's outstanding teen, 2018. I'm a junior at Technology High School, and I've lived in Roner Park my whole life, but Cloverdale is absolutely beautiful. Unfortunately, I've only been up here once for the car show because I couldn't come to the tree lighting because I had a concussion, but that's a whole 'nother story. But it's absolutely beautiful. We actually met the grandparents of a former teen title holder, which is crazy, it's small world, but Cloverdale is absolutely beautiful, and holding this title has been crazy. I never thought that at 17-years-old I would be holding a title within the Miss California organization, but it's given me great opportunities. Both Tyler Avery and I have gone on to Miss California in Fresno, which was, Fresno's really hot, but, you know, Fresno's Fresno. But, um, being a title holder has given me the confidence to be a leader at school. I'm president of a club called Interact at Technology High School. We do a lot of community work in our community and even nationally, which is great, but overall, being a title holder and representing Sonoma County, Cloverdale being in Sonoma County, has been an honor, and I thank you for allowing all of us, all of the past title holders, and all of the title holders to come this opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your service.
Does it get easier? This is the last one. Number one, hi, my name is Tyler Avery Lewis, and I'm the current reigning Miss Sonoma County for 2018, and I have exactly two weeks until I hand over my crown to somebody else. And while I used to think that this crown is a little bit of hardware, it's, it's kind of grown on me, you know? But I'd like to say thank you to mayor and the vice mayor and the council, excuse me, for encouraging me and constantly pushing me throughout my year. Thank you for the warm smile and hug, Mayor Bagby. And, um, like Pinkale said, it's been amazing. I've had the opportunity to be in Cloverdale twice for two events, and, you know, the tree lighting was special because I got to sing off-key, so, you know, everybody loves an off-key Christmas song, so you can't go wrong with that. But it's been an amazing year. Being able to see all the awesome cars in your community was everything. I've been a car-loving kid since I was about, we taught, and I have a 65 Mustang in my garage just waiting to be turned on, so being around all those cars is very exciting for me. But being a member of this community, just like Pinkale has pushed me, I'm now the president of the Santa Rosa Junior Colleges Black Student Union. I have done many efforts in my community to help with homelessness by providing shelter for those in need, as well as clothing and warm and cold, warm and cold food sources, especially in the midst of torrential weather like we have right now. And, sorry, I don't see the timer, so I want to make sure I stay on point.
You've got at least a minute.
Okay, thank you. And overall, it definitely has helped me grow. Being Miss Sonoma County has been amazing, and I hope you all come and support us when we do this handoff, because I'm telling you right now, I don't know how Pinkale feels about it, but I'm kind of feeling like I don't want to show up to the theater, so you guys might want to block the back entrance. But please come and support us, if anything, just to say goodbye and to wave in the crowd and pretend like you enjoy us redoing our talents, because Pinkale's going to dance and I'm going to sing one more time. That's all she wrote, but can we please have a photo with the council before we depart?
Absolutely.
Would you like us to come up, or would you like?
You know what we'll do? We'll finish public comment, and then we'll take a little recess, and then we'll take a picture. How about that?
Awesome. I appreciate you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to come forward? And please state your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Shirley Davis. I have an image up there. This is, since we're going to be talking about a park today, I thought this might be an appropriate time to encourage you to maybe purchase this kind of equipment. And if you notice, it's weight. It's weight equipment, but there are no weight discs, because it uses your weight. So it's much easier to maintain. This was at a parking lot at a hiking trail in Manitowoc, Wisconsin. But I don't know if I can get this, to do this or not. Ah, yes. I'll go to the next one. So you see, this person's using it, and you could, there are no weights involved, just what his weight is and the, and the amount of force that he uses. And the next one. And that's the company that does it, Greenfields Outdoor. So anyway, I'm just, I'm just proposing it, that while we're thinking of parks, it might be nice to have some physical equipment and promote health and body conditioning and so forth. So I'm just presenting it, throwing it out there to you. And then if we wish to explore it, maybe we can contact Greenfields. Okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any thing for public comment, an item that's not on the agenda? Oh, come on down. The short name, so.
So, I'm Greg Lance. I was here the last time.
Oh, can you speak into the mic?
What's that? I'm sorry. I'm Greg Lance. I was here last time, and I'm here for my son Todd tonight. He's at a school board meeting, and he's the school board president. And so he wanted me to be here in his behalf and review this, okay? It says, "Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city staff. My name is Todd Lance, and I am the president of the school board, Cloverdale School Board, as well as a community member for over 41 years." I thought he was 40, I'm sorry. Wow, gosh, I'm getting old, guys. Okay, so anyway, remember that on his birthday. In 2018, the voters approved Measure H, a geo-bond for the school district for approximately $46 million. This bond will be used to update, modernize, and improve all of our school sites. Although our current needs are valued at over $140 million, Measure H will at least make large improvements. We have also identified matching funds through the state, which will help our dollars go farther. Tonight, I come to you with an idea. I believe in a small town, there is a duty for the city and larger entities to work together. We can accomplish more than, as individuals, as we do it together. I'm going to suggest to the Measure H committee that we partner with the city on as many projects as possible as a way to work with and give back to our entire community. I have several ideas that I want to recommend to the Measure H committee, such as an all-weather track with LED lighting that can be left on until a certain time every night, giving the whole community a safe place to walk and exercise. This is done in many other local areas and has been very successful. I would like to update our kitchen and stage area at the middle school, creating a place for the community to rent and hold events. These are just a couple of my personal ideas that I think that will, I will be presenting to the Measure H committee. And we are very open to any ideas that you might have. I would like the possibility to partner financially with the city to help make these achievable. So as the city council is preparing a new budget, please keep this in mind. Whether it is money, manpower, equipment, or any other form of partnership, we as a district would welcome ideas and be truly thankful. Thank you for your time and consideration, Todd Lance. Okay? So as his father, I want to tell you that, I know this works really well, because when I worked for the city of Cloverdale, I took care of all the parts, and then I helped, I was part mechanic. So we would partner with, like, the Lions Club, and I built this snack shack announcers booth. We partnered with Rasmussen, and we put in lights in outfield. We put basketball hoops in. We put picnic tables from donations from the Geyser. So it helps the whole community, it helps the school, it helps everybody, and that all-weather track would be incredible for this community and everybody, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lance.
Mr. Lance? Mr. Lance? If you wouldn't mind leaving your notes with our.
Oh, yes, could you leave a letter with Linda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Vice Mayor, I believe what they're asking are, you know, to do some shared projects, so what do you think would be the best subcommittee to send this to? Would you want to send it to?
The school subcommittee.
The school subcommittee? Okay, great. So you put, make sure that that gets on the agenda? Does that make sense?
Note for the record, the staff will refer the correspondence to the next regularly scheduled joint city-school subcommittee.
Great, thank you. Okay. So are there, any other, please come forward, and please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name's Matt Glockner, and I'm a longtime resident of the city of Cloverdale. I'm here to speak on the issue about homelessness in Cloverdale. I have over 20 years' experience in public safety in the city of Santa Rosa. What I have learned in those 20 years is that no matter how many resources that city pours into the homeless issue, the problem is just continuing to get worse. Last year, that city spent over $3.5 million on the issue, yet there are more homeless on the streets today than last year. The problem there is out of hand, and money is not working and will not solve their problem. That city's public safety departments track where the homeless are from when they make contact with them. Did you know that over 75% of them are from another county? If you want information on homeless statistics in our county, I suggest that you guys reach out and get the stats that those public safety departments have available. If you look at the city of Cloverdale, our police and fire services are already underfunded and understaffed, and adding more homeless services such as the navigation center will only contribute to the stress on our system that our taxpayers count on. Cloverdale needs to take a firm stance and coordinate a firm direction on where to head from here. Doing nothing and lacking illegal activity by homeless such as drug use, being drunk in public, and panhandling will only make our issue worse, and someday, we will be no different than the city of Santa Rosa. Cloverdale's police department needs to take a hard line on illegal activity, no matter how insignificant it is. Pouring tons of money into housing homeless that don't want to change their ways will only lead Cloverdale down a deeper and darker rabbit hole as more and more dollars get sucked away and spent on services for homeless from places like Eugene, Oregon, Reno, Nevada, Kansas, and Arkansas. Yes, I've worked with homeless from all of those places before, and they're in Santa Rosa for one reason, and that's because of the free services that they provide to them. What I have seen being extremely successful, though, is the type of programs that the Wallace House runs. Small-scale programs for local people, programs that offer safe lodging, safe lodging that comes with expectations on behavior and substance use, lodging with guidance. Small programs with rules work. Free housing with no strict guidelines or rules does not work. I encourage Cloverdale to continue to support the Wallace House and avoid organizations such as Housing First and Reach. Wallace House supports people from our region in a way that all of us in Cloverdale want to see. Other organizations currently are moving people from outside the county and outside of our state into our community, with no expectations on their rules or behavior, and no monetary support to expand the public safety resources that are being greatly affected. Did you know that some of those organizations are currently buying homes in Cloverdale and moving homeless people into them? Wouldn't those homes be better served for our taxpaying citizens looking to establish themselves in our community? Please support the Wallace House moving forward and work to push back these outside organizations who are bringing issues to our community with no real economic or other types of support for our community members. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to come forward at this time? I thought on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we're going to take a little break, and we're going to take the picture. All right, so we're just to do a three-minute break if we can swing that. Okay, all right, I'm going to bring the meeting back to order and go right into proclamations and presentations, the city park master plan presentation. Is that you, or is that?
I'll turn this over to city engineer Mark Rinkone to introduce our presenters this evening.
Great.
Yes, as you know, we've been looking at the city park for a while in terms of its upkeep and needs and et cetera, et cetera. So we've been at this for about, a little over a year now. In terms of creating a master plan, we had created a, a subcommittee, or excuse me, ad hoc committee with ex-mayor Joe Paula and councilmember Walter that were on there and helped guide this, this plan that we're going to present tonight. This is a final culmination of, of public outreach and, and coming up with the citizens' preferred design for a revamped city park. So this is only a first step. Funding has not been secured for, for any of the development as of yet, but however, this is the first step in terms of adopting it. The next step will be, of course, formal adoption and secret documentation to get it, get it registered with the city. And, and, just let me introduce our, our HAA. We've got two principals here. Amy Jessica and Manuela, Manuela King. And they're here to present the results of this study. And so the master plan, again, is just conceptual right now. Nothing is firm. There's no design details in this, it's just concepts. So with no further ado, Amy, if you wouldn't mind coming down and doing the presentation.
We're doing a joint presentation here, so.
Great. Can you be sure to introduce yourselves, too?
Absolutely. I'm Manuela King. I'm a principal with RHAA Landscape Architects.
I'm Amy Jessica. I'm with RHAA Landscape Architects. I'm the project manager.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to present this project. We've been working on it since 2017. We presented to city council, and you reviewed the concept plan. So now we're back again, and we're very happy to present the master plan. We went through a very long and extensive community outreach process. You can see on the process diagram. Do you see what I see?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, okay. We went through a very extensive community outreach process, and it was fairly well-attended by the community at the workshops, so it was great to have the community involved. We also had a survey that was sent out to the community and posted online, and we had a really good record of responses to the survey. What we heard from the community was that the, that the park is very well-loved, it's very heavily used, and because of the heavy use, it's suffered some degradation over time. And so the master plan is intended to heal some of the overuse and provide some new uses that will support the community's desires. So we did, we started by doing an inventory and analysis of the existing conditions, looking at what was working right now and what was most degraded, looking at some of the areas that had some drainage issues, the primary pathway, which is used by both pedestrians and by service vehicles, resulting in some degradation of the paving. We looked at the parking situation, which on an average weekday is not so bad, but on an average weekend with a ballgame, a group picnic, people just using the playground is heavily impacted, and there's an inadequate amount of parking. We looked at the different types of buildings that are there right now, including the event building, the restroom, the concession stand, the playground gazebo, and thought about what might happen in the lot next door. And based on that, we developed a series of conceptual alternatives. Those alternatives were reviewed with the committee and with the public, and it was decided to move forward with alternative A, which eventually evolved into the final concept plan that led to the master plan. In this plan, you get a new entry plaza, a new event building that is leasable for different types of events with restrooms, additional restrooms, which you need in the park. It has a garden that could be used for weddings and special events. You get three bocce ball courts, which don't exist in the park right now, two full-court basketball courts. Right now, you don't have that. You have a kind of half-court, semi-court basketball. You get a concession stand, some smaller picnic areas with barbecues, a new restroom building, a dedicated parking lot, as well as additional street parking, a renovated sand volleyball area, and a new playground with three gazebo areas that are also reservable for birthday parties. The existing large group barbecue area remains and is upgraded to some degree, and the baseball field remains but is upgraded with new bleachers and dugout area. So this is the plan as it's shown in the master plan. This is an enlarged area, so you can see the, in the, the new parking lot on Second Street, an entry plaza as you come into the space, the two basketball courts, the bocce area, the playground, which is near where the existing playground is, the event building, the group picnic area, which remains where it is now, and the sand volleyball area. Just some of images that show what these spaces might look like. There's a lot of detailed design that would be done as the project moves forward. The community was reflected on all of these designs and weighed in, and these were all things that were heavily supported by the community. The, after all the community outreach, a report was developed that summarized the entire process, including the analysis, the survey results, the community outreach results, the design description, and the master plan, and the table of contents is broken out so that it's very clear to understand what the process was and what the results were. So I'm not going to talk in detail about what they were, but there's an executive summary, and if you're interested in looking through, you can see the planning process, the description of the two workshops, and the survey, the process diagram, the goals and objectives that were developed with the committee and the community, the existing conditions analysis, a summary of the community input, including some photographs, and summary of the survey, the description and recommendations. And again, I'll answer, happily answer any questions, but I'm not going to go into detail about this. A phasing plan with a very, very rough cost of each phase, so that you can break down the master plan. A master plan is intended to be developed over a long period of time. It's not something that you have to, like, do all at once. You can certainly break it into as many phases as you want, and so we looked at potentially four phases, but it could be even more than that. And this is how the phases break out. And then we also identified some potential funding sources that you could reach out to for grants and other places that might have funding for this type of project. In the appendix, we have the graphics from the workshops and copies of the boards. And basically, that is what we presented. Just so that you're a little bit aware of dates, workshop number one was March 21st in 2018, and workshop number two was April 25th in 2018. At both workshops, the boards were presented in both English and in Spanish, and the survey was also in English and Spanish, the online survey. And so there was plenty of opportunity to reach out to a diverse community to respond to the project. The, the public input announcement was solicited. There were posters placed around by city staff. It was advertised in the local newspaper two weeks ahead of each meeting, so it was well-noticed in the newspaper. It was also posted on the city webpage, posted on the city Facebook page, and the survey was electronically available on the city website, announced on Facebook, and hard copies were available at city hall for anyone who didn't have digital access. It was, there was an article in the newspaper about the project, so the community was aware. I don't have a copy of the article with me, but you probably have read it. It had a nice photo, too. It had a nice photo, too. And we carefully considered the existing trees on the site, so if you have questions about that, every, some of the trees are aging and need to be removed, but we preserved as many trees as possible while getting in all the new facilities that were requested by the community, because a big part of the beauty of that park is the character of the existing trees. We haven't gotten into detail about detailed planting, detailed paving, wall details, anything like that yet. This is a master plan. It's very high-level. It's basically looking at what program will be included in the park, where will it be located, how will it roughly look, but all those details are yet to be developed. And the type of restroom that we're considering is a prefab restroom dropped in place by Romtech. They're really very nice, using them on other parks for other cities. You can, different styles and they're really quite nice. You can attach service areas, storage buildings, other things if you want to those buildings. And so, you have a lot of choices. So, we're here to entertain any questions.
Great. Does the council have any technical questions or clarification questions?
No, just a comment.
Okay, okay. All right. Do you have any questions right now? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming before us and sharing this with us. I had the privilege of being on this ad hoc committee with former council member Paula when we first started to lay this out and the expense is considerable. But it's kind of like, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? You need the plan to apply for the grants, you know? And this way, we have it already done. We've got some cost numbers associated with it and hopefully, we're going to be able to move it forward. But thank you for your hard work.
Yes. You're welcome. Did you have something?
Yes, I made most of those questions, so you answered. Thank you very much.
Great. Anybody else? Okay. I'll give the public a chance to come up and ask any questions at this time. Anybody? Yeah, come on. You have to come forward and spate your name and who you are, because no one knows...
Jean Lyle here in Cloverdale. Just quickly, I thought the city, I heard you say that new bleachers were going, was in the plan? Those bleachers, I think the city just put new bleachers up there about three to five years ago, unless my timing is... Is that...
No, you're right. You're right, Jean. Those aluminum ones are. I fairly know, but we'll recycle those. They'll be used in that facility, too.
Yeah.
This is true. I mean, we didn't get into whether the bleachers are going to be used or not. They'll be reused.
Okay. Sorry about that.
And Madam Mayor, I just wonder if this would be a project that Todd Lance would be interested in sharing with the city, maybe with those bocce courts and maybe some tennis courts or... So, we'll bring that up at a subcommittee meeting as well.
Great, great. Thank you. Yeah, anybody else? Right, I guess, what's the necessary action right now? I just, we need to just receive the report, correct?
So, the action tonight is really just to receive the presentation. Obviously, this is an opportunity for council to provide any feedback that you'd like to, you know, share with staff and our consulting team. I do want to take the opportunity to thank RHA for the great work that they've put into this effort. And really, this is, as your city engineer indicated, this is really kind of the first step in the process is to bring forward and have council support the master plan for city park. Ultimately, what we would want to do is bring it back for formal adoption. If you support what you see tonight, the plan would be able to look at, you know, what are the anticipated environmental impacts of this project implementation so that we can ensure that the, we obtain sequel compliance and ultimately bring both the appropriate sequel documents, which could range from a catastrophic exemption to a NECDAC or even a mitigated NECDAC, back for formal council adoption.
Great. Any other questions or anything?
Well, the only comment I'd like to make is, just for the public, because I got a couple of phone calls on this one, in that you did state that this is a really long-range plan, because somebody called me and said, "What are you thinking? Where are you going to get five or six million dollars?" And so, this is just purely so that we can go after that grant money. And this is years of development. This is not something that's going to happen next year or the year after. It will just slowly happen probably over the next 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So, thank you. It's a very nice presentation.
Thank you. And you are absolutely right. It's so that you don't make any missteps as money comes in, that you have a vision in mind.
Yeah, just to wrap up comments, I believe I was able to do the, the survey and so, involved a little bit, I was involved a little bit, but I use that park a lot. My dog and I use that park a lot. My husband and I go there quite a lot and it's really, you saw the wear and tear and it's because people love it and it's just such a unique resource. In fact, I mean, I played, my high school came up and played against Cloverdale High School. So, I've played softball at the girls' field and then the boys played at city park. So, I've been coming there to, I think I probably started going to that city park when I was probably 13 or 14 years old. And it's really a gem compared to a lot of the other places where you play ball. There just aren't mature trees. There, it's not in a neighborhood. But if you've ever been there on a game day when everyone is enthusiastically there for, yeah, you're nodding your head, the bleachers are full and so are all the parking spaces. So, you know, it clearly needs a revamp. That gives us, this gives us a really clear path forward and it is going to take a while. But it's a clear path, so thank you so much. Yeah. Thanks for coming up and doing this for us and I think it was, it's just, it's the kind of thing that we need to do more is have a master plan and a bid for moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to our next item, which is communications. Seeing, there are two included in the packet, is that correct? And barring that, we'll move on to new business, a presentation by a citizens' group from Six Acres Water Company. Public, pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I'm on a roll tonight. I can tell. I'm just skipping right ahead here. All right, we'll move on to our consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone, anybody want to poll the minutes and make any corrections? Okay, all right. Good, all right. Well, seeing none, thank you, thank you. We'll move on to communications, which I believe we're going to skip.
Do we need to approve the minutes?
Do we, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm really on a roll. I am zero for three at this point. So, Linda, yeah, I believe we need to have a vote on the consent calendar.
I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Mayor Bagby.
Aye.
And Tucker.
Aye.
Okay. Would anyone like to replace me tonight? No, okay. All right. All right. We see, we'll move on to new business, item number five, presentation from Six Acre
Mayor, council, if I can, just to introduce this item tonight. What you're going to see is a culmination of a considerable amount of work and effort that has taken place over about the last two years. The Six Acres Water District previously, or Water Company previously came before this council and provided a presentation overview that kind of gave the council a background on some of the issues that the company was experiencing with respect to water delivery service within the Six Acres community. At that time, there really wasn't a clear outline on what were some of the potential options for the council to be considered. It was primarily a presentation overview on what were some of the key issues, particularly as they related to what the state of California Division of Drinking Water, Safe Drinking Water was requesting in terms of having the Water Company connect to the city's water system. Since that time, there's been considerable work and that's really what you're going to see tonight is an overview and product of that work effort. Through state funding sources, a qualified engineering firm, GHD, which is joining us tonight, is Joyce, who is kind of the primary author of the engineering study. With her engineering team, prepared a very detailed engineering report that analyzed the necessary infrastructure improvements and the costs associated with that to improve and provide water and sewer service to the Six Acres Water Company area. Included in that overview or in that engineering study are some options and I believe what you're going to see tonight be presented by Joyce are an overview of those options that you can consider. This was reviewed by the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee. One of the directions by the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee was to also look at the adjacent South Cloverdale Water Company area, which is kind of an unincorporated area of town that is located east of Cloverdale Boulevard, really in the heart of Cloverdale. And that particular water company is still evaluating a similar process as this in terms of whether they're going to prepare an engineering study. But there's been quite a bit of organization within the Six Acres neighborhood itself and I think there's been a kind of consensus that's developed around maybe some of the options and I think the residents and neighbors are here tonight to express that to you. Ultimately, our goal is, one, to really provide this overview to the full council this evening and at the end, give, receive your direction and feedback in terms of how you might like to proceed and whether you'd like to proceed to the next step. So, I'd really like to take this opportunity to introduce Joyce, included with her is a really big team of professionals, but also a team of our community members that live within Six Acres that I'm sure would also like to present their ideas and thoughts on what you're going to hear tonight from Joyce. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Joyce and let her kind of dive in on the presentation.
Thank you, David. Thanks for the introduction. And my name is Joyce Chung, for the record. I'm a civil engineer at GHD and tonight, I'm going to provide a brief overview of the project and summarize the work that's been completed to date for the Six Acres Water Company Water System Consolidation Project. Like David said...
Joyce, can you just pull the mic down a little bit? There you go. It's just because we're videoing it, so, thank you.
Yep. So, like David said, there's a pretty involved team that prepared this consolidation project and study. And some of the major stakeholders include the city, the state water board, who is joining us by phone today. So, I have them on speakerphone right now. I think they're on mute so that they can hear everything that's going on right now, but maybe if there are questions at the end, they can help answer some of the funding questions. And the Six Acres community, we have some residents that are joining by phone as well on the call and we have some residents here in the audience as well and they can provide some of their thoughts with regards to this project. So, just a little bit of a background, the Six Acres Water Company is a mutual water company that delivers potable drinking water to 22 properties. And these properties are located outside of the city of Cloverdale city limits, but they are within the city's sphere of influence. They're on the west side of the Highway 101 and they border the South Cloverdale Boulevard. I have another image coming up later on in the presentation that I can dive into detail on where their location is. There are a number of deficiencies with the existing well and treatment system. The well was constructed back in around the 1950s and it's a pretty shallow well. It's also located only around, less than 500 feet from the city of Cloverdale's wastewater treatment plant and they are in close proximity to the Russian River. So, they, because of the shallow nature of the well itself, it's, it can be influenced by surface waters. And it also doesn't have any surface seal, which makes it vulnerable to bacteriological contamination. As for the water distribution system itself, the water main was constructed of transite pipe, which is asbestos cement pipe. It was pretty common back in the days, but it's, it only has a lifespan of around 50 to 70 years and right now, it's to the max of its useful life. The treatment system itself also is inadequate. It doesn't meet the state requirements. It is a, is currently a chlorine disinfection system, but the state requires more stringent requirements for disinfection to provide potable water. So, the goal of this project is to evaluate available alternatives and select one that can secure dependable, safe, and long-term potable water for the Six Acres community. It's important to note that there's no redundancy in this current system, so if the well, for any reason, fails or if the coordination system doesn't function properly, there's no potable water for these 22 properties. The state water board has provided technical assistance for this project under Prop 1 and the work performed to date under Prop 1 includes an engineering feasibility study that evaluates the alternatives. It also includes a financial analysis and there was a community meeting last year and ongoing coordination efforts with the residents as we speak. In terms of the alternatives considered, I just have a bullet item, bullet list over here, but I have, I can go into more detail once I show the images and the layout of these alternatives. But in general, alternative number one is to upgrade the existing well system so that the Six Acres Water Company can continue to maintain the infrastructure within the properties and that includes the water laterals, the water main distribution system, as well as the well and coordination system. But we will need to upgrade it to meet the current state requirements. Alternative number two is a full annexation of the Six Acres service area into the city of Cloverdale. And this means that the properties would be incorporated into the city of Cloverdale. They'll need to meet the LAFCO requirement, city conditions for annexation. And with alternative number two, the city would provide the water to these residents and the Six Acres Water Company and its current well would be abandoned under this alternative. Alternative number three is an out-of-service area agreement, or out-of-area service agreement with the city and it's a coordination effort between the city as well as the Six Acres Company community where there is going to be a metered intertie to connect the city's current water system to the, to the Six Acres community. And with alternative number three, the Water Company will still need to be in operation to maintain the infrastructure, but that water will be supplied by the city. And just, just a summary of the design requirements, there's a lot of different approvals that needs to be processed for each of these alternatives. They're different from, for each alternative and each stakeholder has different requirements. So, the state water board, the fire district, the Six Acres Water Company, and the city of Cloverdale all has different requirements and this is just a summary table of who requires what type of, what type of approval and what are some of the criteria that needs to go into each of these designs. Now, over here, I have an image of the Cloverdale or the Six Acres area and I don't know, you probably see my mouse moving, right? So, the area in red comprises of the 22 properties that are currently served under the Six Acres Water Company. The well itself is these orange dots on the east side of Highway 101. So, this is Highway 101 and this over here is South Cloverdale Boulevard. This is Lyle Lane and El Rancho Road. This is Lyle Lane and El Rancho Road. So as you can see, the existing water distribution main goes underneath the Highway 101, and there's also a creek crossing at two locations in Lyle Lane and also another one on South Cloverdale Boulevard. The existing main is only four inches in diameter. State requirement requires an eight-inch diameter main so that there can be fire hydrants that can provide for emergency situations. And under alternative one, we would upgrade this existing system by replacing the treatment system with membrane filtration and disinfection system, and the well itself would have a concrete slab over to protect it from surface waters. The main would be replaced all along this dark blue line. It's going to be in the same alignment or in the pretty close alignment to the existing water main. There will be new water services per the state requirements, and I believe they would need to be metered as well. Alternative 1B is very similar to alternative 1A, but we split it up into 1A and 1B because 1B, we are analyzing the potential of drilling a new well. So this new well would be located farther away from the wastewater treatment plant, and we developed this, we identified this location for the new well over here based on our hydrogeological investigations of the groundwater. This alternative, however, requires an extension of the water main from, I lost my mouse, from the existing well to this new well, so there is an additional cost associated with that. But the rest of it is very similar to alternative 1A in terms of replacing the water main and the services and the fire hydrants. However, this alternative would abandon the existing well here. Alternative number two is the full annexation to the city of Cloverdale's water system. So in light blue here on South Cloverdale Boulevard, that's the existing city water main that runs through this Boulevard here. Through a full annexation, the Six Acres Water Company can completely dissolve, which means abandonment of the existing well and treatment system. The new water main that connects to the city water main would probably extend from South Cloverdale Boulevard through Lyle Lane and another extension, oops, another extension on El Rancho Road here. The city requires fire hydrants every 300 feet, so there are a little bit, I keep on changing the slide. So there are several more hydrants here than what the state requires because of the more stringent standards, and what you see in green here is also a city requirement to have sewer service provided to all the properties here who connect to, who are incorporated into the city as a result of this annexation. And alternative number three is a metered intertie. The metered intertie would be along South Cloverdale Boulevard. In this image here, I show it at the intersection of El Rancho Road and South Cloverdale Boulevard, but it can be along anywhere on South Cloverdale Boulevard. So Six Acres Water Company would still need to remain in operation with this alternative because they'll be collecting the fees, they'll be doing all the operations and maintenance of the infrastructure in this alternative, but the water itself would be through the city of Cloverdale. So this is a summary of the estimated project costs for each of the alternatives that we evaluated. This slide is a little bit different than what was presented in the agenda packet that you've received earlier. The reason is because the street improvements are an item that would need further discussion, so that item has been taken out of this evaluation and this presentation here, and that can change based on negotiations and further discussions with the city. But if you look at the costs here, the most expensive one is drilling a new well. That's where you need a driller, extended water main, but the full annexation and the metered intertie costs are fairly comparable. And in fact, the full annexation, it will eliminate the annual O&M costs, operations and maintenance costs, and there won't be an annualized long-term rehab and replacement cost because that will be factored into the water usage fee to the city of Cloverdale. Whereas the metered intertie, there will still be personnel who will be responsible to collect the fees, who will be responsible to maintain the water meter in the valve vault on the South Cloverdale Boulevard here. And if we just look at the water system upgrades, we've done a financial analysis based on just the capital expenses for the water system, and alternative to the annexation comes out to be the lowest cost of these alternatives that were evaluated. The key assumption is that the water system capital cost would receive the maximum state grant funding of $30,000 per parcel, so with 22 properties, that's the $660,000 that you see in red over there. And the remaining capital cost would be funded by Six Acres from either a low interest or a no-interest state loan, which, if you look at the no-interest, that's around $1,200 per parcel per year. To a low interest of 1.7% for 30 years, that's going to be around $1,500 per parcel per year. So roughly $100 per parcel per month is what we anticipate. And then when we look at the, back in the slide, there were sewer system upgrades and there are street improvements. We are assuming that the sewer system capital cost would be entirely covered by state grant funding, and then the city improvements, whether they're roadway improvements, sidewalks, curbs and gutters, or street lighting, or bridge retrofits, those would be discussed, and either they're going to be deferred to maybe future developers or a different, they would be reduced or removed completely from this project, so that's pending the And based on the engineering analysis and the financial analysis, we've coordinated with the residents, and they've decided to proceed with the annexation option. Of course, there are still a lot of details that need to be finalized, including negotiations with the city on the terms and conditions, and they are here to provide their thoughts and comments for this project. But before I end the presentation, I'm not sure if Kevin or David, you'd like to talk about the next steps?
Sure, Joyce. I'll be happy to jump in, and Kevin, feel free to jump in as well. Again, tonight is really a presentation and overview of the engineering results and outline of the options. What staff's really going to ask to do is to take public input from the community that would largely be affected by the options that are presented and receive input from them. If council does decide that they'd like for staff to move forward and work with the Six Acres Water Company residents, what staff would recommend is that we negotiate and develop a pre-annexation agreement. Thus far, Camille Panu, who's in the audience, has developed a draft pre-annexation agreement for our review. It would be necessary for staff to review it, provide our comments, and basically negotiate an agreement that works for both the city and the residents, and ultimately bring that back for council's consideration, assuming you'd like us to dedicate the time and energy to do that, and if that's an option you support. The timeline for doing that, it really is just dependent on how long it takes, negotiation process to occur. There is some consideration in terms of the timelines for funding, and I think, you know, I guess that would be something that I would ask for the Six Acres team to maybe talk about, a little bit about tonight, is what are the funding options available and the timelines associated with that. I know it gets very complicated very quickly, but kind of a high-level overview so that council has that as part of their consideration of this item tonight. And then ultimately, in terms of, you know, again, if you would like staff to work on this, to have us bring it back for your review, you could ultimately refer a pre-annexation agreement to one of your council subcommittees in case it could be either finance, admin, police, or planning and community development, depending on what you recommend for, you know, a little more detailed review on a pre-annexation agreement, or even public works for that matter. And, you know, ideally, staff would really identify what are the key funding parameters for this. One of staff's considerations in all of this is if, again, council supports the idea of the option of annexation, that it not be a burden to our existing taxpayers and our existing residents, and that we seek ways to fund the work that would be necessary to move this project forward, you know, through some of the funding sources. So that would be all part, again, of that decision framework and getting your feedback on what, you know, I don't want to go down too much further until we hear from the council on kind of what your thoughts are relative to this presentation this evening.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you have questions for, just regarding the presentation? Yeah, so we'll go ahead and start with that, and then I'll open up public comments. So yeah, go ahead.
I'm just a little confused as to why the annexation, the full annexation-
Why don't you give her the page number so we can all jump in?
Yeah, it's the chart, it's page number 129, but she won't hear that probably.
Page 32, I think, of the presentation.
And so I don't understand how the full annexation went from the most expensive alternative in my packet to the least expensive in your presentation.
So in your packet, we had included the street improvements, so in this slide over here, we took that out because when we did this initial study, we had included costs for a full bridge retrofit-
Sure.
-roadway reconstruction for Lyle Lane and El Rancho Road, which includes sidewalks, curbs and gutters, and street lighting. And I understand that that's something that we'll probably need further discussions on, so that's why it's taken out of this line item over here.
That's a huge difference.
It is a huge difference, and we understand that that's something that maybe potential, it can potentially be developed later on, maybe not as part of this project. That's something that we would like further direction on.
So that would be one of the items that-
It's just a little misleading, I think. This presentation is a little misleading to the public.
But ultimately, that would be what we would need to negotiate.
Boy, howdy.
Yeah, okay. So does that, does that answer your question?
Sort of.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned that improvements and lights would be for a future development. I don't understand what that means.
Well, that's a requirement for city of Cloverdale's standards. So for city streets, I believe if, when I looked over the standards, they required the sidewalks and the street lighting that's built into these city right-of-bays. However, because Lyle Lane, I believe, is currently a private road, it's not developed up to the city of Cloverdale standards. So whether or not it remains the current roadway system itself or develops to meet the city of Cloverdale standards, that's something that needs to be further discussed, and that's why we didn't include the street improvements now. The item that you have in your packet was previously thought to be all-inclusive of meeting the city of Cloverdale's requirements.
Well, if I were, Madam Mayor, if I were to give instructions to-
Well, we can wait and get the input from the public as well, so.
Yes. Because I would like to see city standards in any annexation that takes place.
Okay.
It's on this page.
Yeah. Okay, so go ahead, Gus.
Thank you, and thank you for coming with this presentation. I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions that I already know the answers to. But since you've been here last, we've had a, we now video our meetings, and there's some folks out there in the audience that might not know some of this information. I think it would be helpful to educate them. First of all, how did this water agency fall into such a disrepair since 1956 was when it was first formed? Could you share that with us a little bit? And who dropped the ball on overseeing them?
I'm going to see if I can defer this question to someone from the water board or someone from Six Acres. She's calling in. Janice, do you hear me?
I hear you, but not much more. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and I'm going to put you near the mic so that everyone hears you, Janice. So the question was, how did the Six Acres Company, their well, fall into the current state of disrepair? I don't know if you have any comments on that, or if I can refer the question to the Six Acres residents. If you have any comments on that, that you'd like to contribute, it would be great.
What I can say is that inspection was 90 to 20 years ago with concern about the well, and half the time, there were discussions about connecting with the city of Cloverdale. And as for when 2014, when my staff went out, what happened in that interim, I wasn't, that would be a question for, I think it would even be the previous board members of Six Acres. So if anybody from Six Acres has anything to contribute.
And can you be sure to state your name for the record?
Hi, guys. My name is Sage Smith Taylor, and I'm currently acting as the president of Six Acres. And essentially, what happened with our system is we, and Janice, correct me if I'm wrong. Can she hear me? All right, Janice, correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually had missed some water tests, and that put us out of compliance with the state's requirements. And as a result of that, we are in a situation where we need to hook up to the city's water system, and I think at the same time, David, the state told all of us that Six Acres residents had to hook up to the city of Cloverdale, and that was the only option. Janice, the only option is to hook up to the city, right? Janice is gone. Thank you.
Well, when you say hook up to the city, you're referring to either with an annexation or with us dropping a water meter.
Yes, the location of our well makes it, we are not going to be able to do a well to current building standards in the location where it is.
Why can't you move it over onto the west side of the highway, right at the end of Lyle Lane there, as opposed to way out on the other side of 101?
We have looked into the hydrogeological cross-section based on a number of different wells within the area, and the location, the prime location where there's good water quality and that is also further away from the wastewater treatment plant and also not going to be influenced by surface waters is the area that we've identified. And there is a cross-section within our engineering report. Unfortunately, I don't have that slide with me today, but I can definitely point you to the geological assessment that we based it off of.
Madam Mayor, just a couple more. I'm not going to go through all of this right now. I want to hear what the public has to say about it. But also, let me see, you had mentioned that you left out the infrastructure portion of the full annexation, which revolves around sidewalks and street pavings and streetlights, and, you know, I got to tell you, that's got to be right in there, right up front. to tell you, that's got to be right in there, right up front. Seventeen years sitting on this dais, I've seen too many annexations. People forget what we agreed to unless it's actually right up front in writing before the annexation. The City of Cloverdale does not have the financial wherewithal to even pave the streets and fix the sidewalks that we have in our city now. So there needs to be some type of funding to come forward with this package. And again, I'm not going to get into that now, but the rest of my questions I'll wait for.
Okay. Any, any other questions right now? Okay. So with that, did you have something to, to add?
Oh, no. Thank, thank you for your comment, but I just wanted to see if it's all right to have maybe some of the residents here speak on their behalf about the, the streets and those roadway improvements.
No, at this point, yeah, anyone who would like to come forward, please do. And you'll need to fill out the pad. So if one or two of you kind of come down and wait in line and, and put your name down before you speak, it would just save a little bit of time. So is there, is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time?
Hi, I'm jumping in front of the line here. So what we've been told from the state is that we are going to have to hook up to the City of Cloverdale. And the only choices we have really is whether we let them tell us how we do and dictate what our future is, or we stand together and do it the way we want in our little tiny community. That's our only, that's the only choice we have to make. So hopefully, we do this together.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn Haynes, resident of Cloverdale since 2011. A little nervous, never done any public speaking before, so excuse my nerves. My concern with option three, the metered inner tie, is that we've been told that that would possibly prevent us from improving our properties. This leads me to sway my opinion towards full annexation and becoming part of the city. As a resident right on the boulevard, we don't have sidewalk. We don't have the same city services, and I would be interested in receiving those services and becoming part of the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? Don't be shy. Yeah, anybody who wants to come forward next, please just go ahead and come down and put your name on, on the notepad.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for entertaining our discussion tonight. My name's Lori Lyle. I'm speaking on behalf of my mom, Susan Lyle, who lives on El Rancho Drive. And I, I want to address a couple of different comments. First, about the, the street improvements. As City Manager Kelly expressed, we, we are interested in doing a pre-annexation agreement. And in that agreement, we would like to address the situation with the streets. Full improvement, according to the city's standards, would be unattainable really on Lyle Lane. It's a private road now. It's been a private road for many, many years. On Lyle Lane, the residents are happy to have it continue to be a private road, same as El Rancho Drive. And maintenance responsibility has been and should remain with the property owners and the residents on those roads. If it's set forth in the pre-annexation agreement, then it should be clear to everyone that the city should not have an obligation to put in street improvements, street lights, sidewalks, any of those improvements that we would typically see on an urban street. The lifestyle in that area, Lyle Lane and El Rancho Drive, has been somewhat rural, and the city has kind of grown around it. But there's still a desire to maintain that rural lifestyle in those areas. And so that's one of the biggest concerns that the residents out there have, is that these, these urban-level streets are going to affect how people feel about their properties and, and their homes. And so that's something that they would like to see left as is. I realize it's not consistent with the city's standards. I realize that there's concerns about it, but I think if we make it clear from the get-go that this is how it's going to proceed, I think we can all find a way to live and move that forward together. I also think that the situation with the metered inner tie, it, it may be less expensive in the beginning, but over the course of time, it is not the less expensive option. And it does really affect the ability of those residents to enjoy their properties and do even, you know, minor upgrades and improvements to them under the terms of that inner tie agreement and the LAFCO requirements. So the annexation is probably the best option for everyone involved. And there's a lot of support for it. Our family has been in Cloverdale for a long time, a long, long time. And we, even though we have not been in the city boundaries, we've been residents at Cloverdale. We've gone to Cloverdale schools, contributed to Cloverdale activities, and feel like that we're members of the city. So we want to just make that official. And so we really do support annexation to the City of Cloverdale. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, would anyone else like to come forward, make a comment? Okay. Well, seeing done, we'll bring it back. Did you have something you wanted to add? City Manager Kelly, or Mr. Thompson?
Well, I, I just want to touch on one topic that was brought up, and that, and that's in relationship to the, the inner tie option. Staff has had discussions with, with LAFCO, what would be required. You know, LAFCO is the agency that oversees extension of services outside of boundaries and/or annexations. And obviously, we, we discussed these options with LAFCO staff. And in order to extend services outside of our boundaries, it would require an outside utility service agreement. That outside utility service agreement is predicated on a health and safety issue. In this case, we think there's clear facts in the record that support that idea, that it can be extended under that concept. But LAFCO's position is that if, if we do do that, they, they would, and they've indicated this in all the forums, limit future expansion of those units and residential uses because the extension of that infrastructure would have been based on the, again, the premise that there's a health and safety issue. So it, it does, as the speakers indicated, somewhat reduce their ability to make improvements to their, to their, to their properties under the county offices with an outside utility service agreement.
Okay.
One thing I did want to mention is that, and it's identified in the study, some of the houses within, within the Six Acres area have already obtained city services and obtained outside utility services agreement. So there has been some pre-decision made on some of those units where the outside utility service agreement was previously approved. Now, LAFCO, since that time, has changed the regulations and made them much more stringent. So it, it, they're, they're different than what they were when, probably when those services were originally extended outside our boundary. So, and that primarily, that was sanitary sewer services because, again, the lots for septic do not meet the county standards.
Okay, great. Did you have some more comments or questions?
I don't want to negotiate this here, but I do have a lot of things. For example, years back, I want to say maybe six, seven years ago, there was talk of annexation of that whole area, the vineyards all the way to 101, because I think, I don't know, a developer was looking at developing that. I, I'd like to also explore that, including that into any annexation as well. And there's a couple other things, but I'd like to be on that subcommittee that is part of the annexation negotiation. So that's it.
Do you have some questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question for Jose, our attorney. They were mentioning to keep the, the lifestyle that they have. But my question is, if you have this annexation, how is the city liable when they don't comply with some of the standards of the city?
Well, it absolutely would depend on the standards. We're talking about roads, things like that. In some annexations, there is kind of a, a plan on how it all gets upgraded. I think that there was a little bit of discussion of future developers. A lot of times, things get annexed, and then you, you rely on future developers to come in and upgrade things. But some cities are, are pretty eager to get things up to standard right away. Again, as far as liability goes, it really depends. Is it a private road? Is it a public road? And who has, who has the ownership?
Does that answer your question?
Yes and no.
Does it? No, okay. Okay, so we'll go to this side.
Actually, I think I can answer your question a little bit. There was a talk, like Gus said, about a development back in the vineyards. But Lyle Lane, I don't know how many people who have actually walked it. I've walked it, I've driven it. The bridge there is one-lane wooden bridge. The sewer line runs hung from the bridge, I believe, and the, and the water is up on like a log. And it's serviced quite well, but if, there's two houses in the back of that that I don't even know that you could get away with fire. I don't think the fire department would, the fire district would go for a one-lane road to service houses that were in the back of it. I, I realize that this is a, you guys need good water. You need fresh, good water to drink, and you're not getting it. And we would like to be, I would personally like to be part of the solution. And this isn't the first time we've talked about this annexation. Over the years, we've done it many times. I'm just a little nervous about bringing those roads even partially up like Lyle. Now, I don't know that you could ever do it. You would have to take yards. There's maybe one or two houses that would, I don't know how you'd do it. How would you get the 60, 70 feet that you need and, and still be able to function? The other one is not so bad. The other road is not so bad, but the Lyle Lane is the one.
It's the two landblocks.
It's, it's got two landblocks, yeah. So, but I guess that can all be ironed out in an annexation agreement. But it does make me pretty nervous. I was thinking that it would be more logical, once I saw the price tag of really an upgraded full annexation, I figured everybody in the audience would be wanting just the hookup, just the, you know, to be able to get water. This is sort of startling to me. I got to think some more on this one.
Jason, do you want to-
Thank you. I mean, I, I just have some pretty high-level comments. I was able to meet with the Six Acres, a few representatives came to us, I believe it was on January the 30th. Kevin and David, if you could fix my memory, but somewhere around there. And it is, it's, it's concerned citizens who need to find a resolution for a very substantial problem that they have before them. And they've come to us asking for help, in my opinion, as you should always feel able to do. Five million dollars sitting on a piece of paper is going to be jaw-dropping regardless of how many times I look at it and how many different times I try and digest it. So I really hope that the, the subcommittee that gets assigned to this and the steps that we take to move forward in the direction that the council ultimately gives you a go in, please keep the people first the best that we can, but understanding everybody. Please understand five million dollars is substantial, and the negotiations could ultimately be lengthy.
Go right ahead. Just, let's let Mary in.
The other question I have is, how involved has Supervisor Gore been in this? He's your representative, and he should be in this audience right now talking, actually. What has he offered as help for this situation?
Sage.
Hi, guys. I don't know that Supervisor Gore has been apprised of this. I haven't spoken with him for sure. David, have you guys had a chance to talk to him? I know that Councilwoman Brigham had mentioned calling Supervisor Gore.
I was just waiting for somebody from you guys to get ahold of him and request. And I've talked to him a number ti, a number of times about this property and also the South Cloverdale Water District. The whole island that we have in the middle of county, right in the middle of our town, which has always irritated the heck out of me. But I just wondered if you guys had made any contact, if he had made any offers to be of assistance, because that's his job.
I have not heard of anything. If you have any advice for me, I'll help in any way I can to make this go forward and get this done so that our town of Cloverdale, City of Cloverdale, is not impacted in any negative way. But we have spoken with representatives from the adjacent areas, and I do think that it's possible that we could, you know, maybe close that whole bubble of island that's right in the heart of Cloverdale and make it-
That would be great.
It's the goal. But the first step is to get the, I think, the draft of the pre-annexation agreement over to your lawyers, start working on that. Once we have kind of a baseline, I can go to South Cloverdale again, and we can start making some moves. But step one is if you guys will support getting this over to the lawyers so we can start hashing out the minor details, and I can start hopefully bringing in the rest of that bubble.
Great, so go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did we do a financial impact study on, on this, or is that something-
Well, that's what would be next.
The Sonoma Water District, the state water district is going to do?
There has not done, a fiscal impact study has not been prepared, analyzing what the fiscal costs are for the city to annex this, this property. But that could be something that could be discussed. Again, if you, if you would like to proceed with providing direction to staff to negotiate a pre-annexation agreement, that could be one of the key points that is, one of the key negotiating points is that that be analyzed and brought forward with the, with the pre-annexation agreement.
Yeah.
And ultimately, your direction, if you should provide it tonight to move forward, doesn't mean you're approving a pre-annexation agreement. It's really just giving direction to staff to sit down with Six Acres folks and, and discuss and come to agreement on a draft agreement for, for council's consideration.
So that would be item number, number, the full annexation as opposed to item number three, where we would just leave a hookup, run a, run a separate meter for everyone to come off of. You know, now we're talking Church Lane. I mean, my God, you know, for years, we, we just could not even begin to imagine how much money that would cost with the condition of those roads and the hills and, and everything like that. I, I don't know. It's, it's going to be a big, I, I want to see the city walk, walk away from this with zero expense. You know, I mean, I, I want these folks to have clean water. If we can do something in the interim, fantastic. But I don't want to see the city have to spend any money on this. Like I said earlier, I've got constituents up, up by the high school, up off of School Lane complaining every time they see me about the roads and the sidewalks. So that, that's just how I feel.
One more.
If this is going to go back to the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee, I, I would really, really, really urge you guys to, because I am not on that committee anymore. I mean, I have been through this whole thing, talking to you guys. But you got to get Tennis Wick from Sonoma County Planning up here with James Gore. Get him in the same room with you guys. Sit him down and really, maybe, maybe at the subcommittee level, we can get something worked out. But this is a lot their responsibility also.
Okay.
So it was on their watch.
Right, okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I, I really encourage you to contact Supervisor Gore because you have been, in some aspects, neglected by the county.
Boy, howdy.
And you need, you are the ones that have to voice that because you are under their jurisdiction. So that is the way to really, I think you should approach him and the county because that's how we're going to know how we can proceed on a pre-annexation agreement. If we don't know how much money they're going to provide to your project, how can we really have an agreement? have an agreement?
Oh, my goodness. This is the, this is kind of the chase and the tail thing, you know? I will reach out to Supervisor Gore this week and see if we can't get him into a subcommittee meeting. I'll touch base with him a little bit, sort of explain the rough draft of what the situation And hopefully, they can help us. One thing, too, is that if we can have three systems connect together, it actually doubles the funding from the jump. So that will help hopefully encourage South Cloverdale to join us with Cloverdale, which would be the third entity involved in that consolidation of services systems. But if we don't, if we don't start working, because like, I can't do anything without the pre-annexation agreement going forward, and if you're telling me you can't do anything without knowing exactly how much you're gonna, you can get for this project, then we're really gonna just be stalemated, and we'll be back here again in a year, and we'll be back here the year after that, and we're not gonna go forward.
I believe you're gonna get a response.
We'll get something done. We'll get something done, for sure.
And we want to rush this as much as possible, too, but not rush it to the level that we don't know where the parties are standing.
Oh, yeah, I'm not asking you to say, yes, do this, lock it in, let's build it tomorrow. I'm asking you to please give city council the permission and support to just send the pre-annexation agreement its next step while I work on the next step of the funding. So I'm just asking you to take a step. I'm telling you and committing to you, I will take a step, and at the end of the day, we're all gonna end up in the same place. And that's to protect this community.
You know, I also think, Councilmember Cruz, that the financial impact study will shed a lot of light on what we need before the supervisors can come forward and say, here's what we can do. And I don't know that it has to wait for the next subcommittee meeting. If, you know, we'll, I think we can put something together on a date that James Gore can come up here with his crew, even though it's not a regular meeting, as long as we notice it properly. So let's not, you know, tunnel visioned on a specific date.
But we're definitely interested in working with this.
Joyce, it probably has a.
What is this, Janice? Can you repeat?
I was hoping I could get a speaking spot.
Maybe you can just listen to her on regular and then tell us what she said.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, what is it? Oh.
Just, they're next.
Yeah, unfortunately, they weren't able to hear a lot of the questions. So that's why they haven't been, this is Janice and Diana on the call from the water board, and they haven't been able to really.
Well, our meeting will be videoed, and it will be up on YouTube within a few days. So they can watch it.
Even to not.
So actually, Mark's next, so.
Yeah, he said that they're bringing the city council meeting on video, and it'll be up, but is there anything you want me to relay to the city council members right now?
Mayor, if I may, just to kind of summarize what I think staff's hearing from the council. It sounds like there's at least general support for the idea of a pre-annexation agreement subject to discussions with the county about potential funding, some of the infrastructure improvements that we know are so vital to bringing this currently underserved property into the city, that staff ensures that there isn't an impact to our existing residents, our existing community, and/or ratepayers from bringing this project in so that it's a fiscally sound proposal, that is, it's not being funded by current residents in any way, and that the pre-annexation, a draft pre-annexation agreement be reviewed at a subcommittee level and ultimately brought back after further discussion and negotiation to this council. That's kind of, that's kind of what I hear at this point, and included with that would be, as Vice Mayor Walter indicated, a fiscal impact analysis to really identify what the financial impacts of this, of proposed annexation to the city would be.
Great, okay, and Ms. McConaughey was next, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that what you see here for alternative number two is not what's gonna happen because operationally, we can't do this. You've got two dead-end pipelines with a blow-off at each end. I'm not gonna send staff down at Ricti Bridge to go and operate a blow-off.
Okay.
So just be aware that we need some redundancy in there so that we don't introduce quality issues. Eric, nobody goes down that bridge.
Gotcha, okay, great. Mr. Sanchez.
Mayor, just what I was gonna mention is also, as part of this, my office hasn't really been too involved, but in looking at the pre-annexation agreement, we'll also take a look, we're not familiar with what conditions are out there, such as Mark is stating, but we'll also take a look at the liability issues as far as what I hear is standards. What if, what if standards aren't updated? I also heard from Councilwoman Brigham regarding the potential fire issues, and I know that the fire, our fire department would be having an opinion on roads, et cetera.
One issue that I did hear Vice Mayor Walter raise is the issue of annexation of the two vineyard properties. And I guess the question is, from council's perspective, if you'd like us to evaluate that further. And the reason I ask is because normally, when annexations are considered by this council, you are looking at a project that involves bringing property into the city with an understanding what those improvements are going to be. And it could present a potential opportunity for the city to annex additional property that's within our sphere. In my discussions with Lafco staff, that's what they would like to see us do. They want land that's in our sphere to be annexed, and their answer is, if you don't, then you need to reduce your sphere and remove it. And I certainly understand that perspective. I understand from the residents that there may be some consternation because that, you know, it is designated for residential uses on our, on our general plan. But again, that would be subject to, you know, future discussions by this council or another council upon future development. But, you know, from staff's perspective, it is ideal to kind of bring it all in together, but, you know, that's really something, I guess, we'd want to seek your direction if you'd like us to have that conversation with the Six Acres community and see if there's support for that as well.
And if I could just say why I'd like that?
Sure, absolutely.
The reason I'm thinking the vineyard should be annexed in is, you know, if we don't do it now, Lafco is really just, just digging their heels in on us doing any annexations that does not include that whole Church Lane area, and I don't know that we're ready for that. I'd like to help Six Acres, but I'd also like to get that, that potential housing lots into the city now while Lafco wants us to do something to help them. That's our carrot, is bringing the whole thing in except for Church Lane. That's where I'm coming from.
Any other comments or questions?
I wanna let you go first, if I do.
No, go ahead.
I say who goes first.
My goodness. There was something that I believe, is it Sage?
Sage, yes.
Thank you. You brought something up that I found thought-provoking, and it seems like you've been given information that if we don't take some sort of action, ultimately, somebody will come in and tell us exactly how and when we're gonna do it. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
The state has told the city, and they've also told the residents of Six Acres, that we have to, like, there's no alternative despite the fact that they've looked at some numbers to drill a new well and these other options, that we have to hook up to the city of Cloverdale services. And if we don't do this and make the decisions ourselves and together, they will tell us what it's gonna look like. And they'll force us to do it the way they want us to do it. And I just want us to retain control of our own community instead of having the state and the county tell us what to do.
Thank you.
That's well said.
Jose, can you comment to that at all? I mean, with your office, are you taking this over? You had mentioned earlier that your office hadn't had too much involvement yet.
Absolutely, Councilmember. So what's being pointed to is really the change in law a few years back, and it was a Senate bill that had the state pretty much requiring the water districts, the small water entities that didn't comply with water standards, that they were, they were basically saying that they would force larger entities, actual water systems like cities, to take them, to take them under their system. And it wasn't, it wasn't an option. And the first thing they do is they come and they ask, well, if you guys could work it out, that's great, and I think that's where we're here, where we're at here, that they're asking the two entities, go ahead and see if you can find a plan to make sure that you get city water to this area. Ultimately, if we can't, the legislation is there, the health and safety code, I believe, and that it gives them that power.
And I'll close here with my comments. Thank you for that. I do find that concerning, the ability to maybe lose the opportunity to steer the boat. And again, I find myself going back to, I'm looking out at concerned faces that just want to get clean water, and my personal opinion to move forward was I'd like to see if we can get a pre-annexation agreement going and get those next steps. Thank you.
Do you have something else to add?
I just wanted to say that I am not opposed to doing parallel, like you were worried that we were gonna slow you down. This has been, like I said, we've been dealing with this for years, and I know it's been really difficult for a lot of you, so I don't see any reason why we can't do this on a parallel, but I really feel strongly that we need to get the county involved. But so what? I mean, you can still be working on a pre-annexation agreement and still knock out some of these problems. So, I'm good.
Great, go ahead, Marta.
Yes, I am very grateful for your transparency in the meeting that we had with Kevin, Council Turner, and city manager, because it shows that you have thoroughly thought this and that you have pointed out all the issues that would be difficult to address. And I'm especially grateful for your concern about easements, because I know that's definitely gonna have an impact on the vineyard down the road, and it is essential. But I agree with Councilwoman.
Brigham.
Brigham.
You're welcome.
There's three of us sick in this council today, okay? We're not thinking very well. That we need to go ahead and work with the pre-existing agreement and continue simultaneously to knock on Supervisor on the county's door.
Do you have something more?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cruz has a cold, and she's taken some pretty heavy cough syrup, so. But I, too, want to see you get under some type of an agreement with the city water. We can't have you not having portable water out there. So with that being said, I'd like to see us go ahead with the pre-annexation, trying to include the vineyards. I'd also simultaneously like to see us move forward with number three, if we can do that as well, just in case the annexation isn't approved by the fire district. They're gonna have to weigh in on this, and it might be a quicker and easier path for now to get you the meter set up.
I do have one more question. There is nothing that would stop us if there does seem to be problems with a metered inner tie. We can do the metered inner tie and still do an annexation, right, Jose? So they would not lose their ability to do, I know it's.
They would lose their ability to protest the annexation, actually, if we go with the metered inner tie.
That's what I'm wondering. Because right here, it says, "It is important to note that landowners granted municipal services through," and OSAA lose their eligibility.
To protest.
To protest a future annexation application that includes their property. But that's not really clear to me, what does that mean, really?
Okay. Jose, do you want to tackle that?
So along with like a pre-annexation agreement and those types of agreements going forward, one of the conditions would be that they could not protest the actual annexation, because at that point, you put in a lot of time, a lot of effort to negotiate something, and once the two parties agree, one of the conditions is always that as soon as that's an agreement, we go forward and they can't, they can't say no. They can't protest. They're agreeing.
Okay.
But Lafco can.
Lafco can. But given.
There's the asterisk.
Yes, but given the fact that this application is consistent with Lafco policy, there isn't a lot of danger of that happening. So unless there are any other comments or questions, I've been, most of my questions have been asked and answered, but I will point out that, you know, one of the difficulties behind this and Cloverdale Water Company and the frustrations with Church Lane has been the development gap. And it's actually, it's SB 88 that provides the funding that even makes this worth talking about. So, you know, in light of that and, you know, funds that are currently available, I would like to move forward. There's nothing more essential than, you know, clean water, and they're coming and they're asking, and I absolutely agree with Sage, is that we want to do this negotiation on our terms, not what the state board dictates. So I would like to see us move forward with the pre-annexation. And I would remind some of my councilmembers who don't live in condos and places with sidewalks, I don't have to remind you, Marion, we have plenty of areas that are located within our city limits that do not meet our development standards. I live on a street that has no sidewalks, and that house has been there since the 1800s. There are areas within the city limits where people have multiple acres and have cattle and chickens, and no sidewalks. So, you know, the idea that things have to be up immediately to development standards, it just, it's a nice idea, but it just isn't, it isn't reality. I mean, I am comfortable with these folks actually being, I believe the designation is R3. I'm not sure about, this item on page 83 is wrong, where it says that the area would be zoned R2. In my mind, I would think it would be zoned R3, and they would be able to continue with their country lifestyle and have their chickens. Sorry, you can't have roosters, but that's just, you know, we have to draw the line somewhere. And as part of the pre-annexation agreement, obviously, we would be taking care of and addressing all of those safety issues, the bridge being primary. I mean, you know, that's, you know, and then the flip side of this that I'm seeing, too, is that once these folks are annexed, they're paying city property taxes, they're already enjoying the, being in our sphere of influence and enjoying our police department services, and we'd actually be collecting the property taxes, and this is part of what we have to negotiate with the county. So what I'd like to see is having city staff reach out directly to James Gore's office, because he's the hardest person in the world to nail down, and he's required to bring Tennis Wick, and they have to come up here, and we will work around that schedule and talk about it. But as far as my single vote is concerned, I would like to see us move forward, and I think we do have at least a consensus of moving forward. So do you have enough direction at this point?
I think the consensus is clear. I would just want to seek direction from council on maybe which subcommittee you want to refer, the review of the pre-annexation agreement to.
You want it to finance, Gus?
And then if, you know, if there isn't a consensus, maybe take a vote on that.
Gus wants it to go to one that he's on. I'm sure the, I'm sure the mic picked that up anyway, Gus, so. Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm gonna leave it up to the city manager, what do you think the best place is for this as far as that first meeting with James Gore and Tennis Wick?
Well, I think it's probably more of a financial issue than.
Then let's send it to finance, police, and administration for now, and then we'll, the details can maybe go formed out to other subcommittees.
Your sidewalks will pass through me.
There you go.
Council does have the option, if, you know, again, you have your six subcommittees, but you also have the option of forming an ad hoc, if that's the preference.
I think initially, maybe go with finance, and then if we get past that initial hurdle, we could, I would be, I would be in favor of forming an ad hoc. What is, everybody else?
I agree with you.
Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, does that sound good? Okay, so let's go that route. Okay, great, all right. And I don't think there's a vote on this at this point, or does anybody else have any input? Okay, at this point, I think we have, you have everything we need, and except for a five-minute recess until our next item. Oh, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Okay, I'm gonna bring us back. Thank you so much for your patience. We really appreciate it. That was a very dense item. So we are going to move on to item six, review. So we are going to move on to item six, review, application packet for pre-application review, and consider action to adopt resolutions. Let's just call it what it is, it's the Bumgardner Ranch. So who would like to start?
I'll, I'll start, continuing our annexation theme for tonight. Mayor, council members, this item is a request for approval of a pre-application for annexation. You may recall the city's annexation policy adopted by resolution in 2008 requires that projects seeking annexation apply for a pre-annexation review, and that's what we're calling this at this point. It's a really high-level review. You might consider this kind of the first step in the road for, for these two projects as they move through the process, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And again, if approved, they'll move through. So just moving on to the, the two pre-application requests, we have the Bumgardner Ranch, which is a 20-acre, 28-acre residential proposal, and the Payless Storage, which is a 4.6 on two acres, and there's an existing business there, I'll talk a little bit about that. Just a little preface before I go into what the details are, the details that we know about this project is, again, this is the first step. If the resolution is adopted tonight, they'll be moving on to annexation and through all the entitlement processes, which will be, you know, several hearings at planning commission as well as council, talk a little bit about that. But the way the project's laid out at this point is 305 residential units, 79 single families, 60 row homes, 166 affordable, project would be subject to the city's inclusionary housing, they would be, have the ability to either pay or provide the units onsite. We haven't gotten that far in discussion. If they do provide, if they do decide to provide them and the number stays at 305, that'd be around 46 affordable units. There's a six-acre open space up on the hillside with a trail, and a one-acre open space along the creek. Of course, extension of services, sewer, water, all of that on the developer's dime this time, through, through Foothill Boulevard and Sand Home, access through Foothill and through a new road that will be constructed along the southern edge of the property. They have been coordinating with Cloverdale Unified School District, I'm hoping maybe they can give us a brief update when they come up to give their presentation. Other, other possible amenities, I'm, sorry I didn't include this in your packet, we got it, we got it a little bit late, but I did provide paper copies on the dais in front of you, it's a little more illustrative map, shows you some of the, the features that they're planning to, to build into the project. There's a dog park, a community center, trails, all of these things. Again, the project will, and that's kind of what this slide is indicating, if, if approved tonight, the project will move on through the entitlement process. We, you may remember a couple of council members ago on consent, we did authorize a contract to start the environmental work and the fiscal analysis, that's currently underway. We did receive a developer deposit to pay for that. But the project does have a lot of entitlements, the pre-zoning annexation, a general plan amendment, environmental review, precise development plan, subdivision, design review. All of those things will run concurrently, they'll require, I would imagine, at least a couple planning commission meetings, ultimately ending up at the council for the final decision. The Payless Storage is a little bit, little bit different, as I mentioned, is an existing business. They have cargo containers onsite for personal storage that they rent out to individuals, they've got some RV storage. There's also actually a caretaker's unit, so somebody does live onsite, that kind of keeps, keeps an eye on the facility. This one's a little bit different, they're not really seeking any entitlements at this time, other than an annexation, which, you know, technically is probably not an entitlement. You know, we've talked a lot about things being up to code before annexation, I mean, we're, we're quite certain that this business really isn't up to the current city code, it's been a lo, it's been around a long time. Although the, the land use as being a storage is in conformance with the pre-zone of general industry. We've included in the resolution for tonight a condition that would require the project be brought up to current code with any future entitlements, and that's a little bit, that's a little soft, but it would give them an opportunity to, when they come in eventually, to, to do improvements, that's when we would be hitting them up for, to bring it up to current code. There, there may, we've heard through kind of the grapevine, there may be some outstanding code enforcement issues with Sonoma County, we'd like to recommend that one condition on the final annexation would be that they clear up all the code enforcement that's currently occurring with the county. And I'm not 100% sure, I've, I've heard that, so that's not included in the condition of this resolution, but there will be another opportunity to, to include that condition. And we'll check with the county and see what's going on. So our next steps, again, Bumgardner Ranch would be seeking the annexation, pre-zoning, all those entitlements that I spoke about, going through the planning commission, looking for recommendations to the city council, ultimately to LAFCO for the final approval of the annexation. Payless is a little different, they'll be seeking annexation and pre-zoning. We're, we're suggesting or recommending that the business allow to remain in its, and function in its current manner, with the caveat that we will be looking for improvements in the future. I think it would be very expensive to them to, for them to bring it up to code at this point. But I do think that it's a prime development opportunity site with general industry, general plan designation, so that it would be worth pursuing, in my opinion. So our recommendation tonight is, so right now we're looking at these projects at a very high level, this is your opportunity to speak to the applicants, if you see anything that you'd like to suggest that would be good for the project. You don't have to do that at this point, there'll be many other opportunities, but it'd be a good opportunity to give them any direction that you have on the project. They'll hear, they're here and they can hear that, and any direction to staff about these projects as well. And then we recommend you adopt the resolutions and allow these projects to move forward with formal applications.
Okay. Are the applicants present, would they like to come forward? And I'll let you guys say what you like, and then I'll, I'll open it up to the public at a later point. And please introduce yourselves and state your names for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Council for having me here tonight. My name is Jay Flingo. I'm here on behalf of Integrated Community Development, it's also known as ICD, and I'm here to discuss the Bumgardner Ranch master plan community. I want to start off by thanking Kevin and David and all the city staff who helped me get this application put together. I want to talk a little bit tonight about our development team, who we are, what we do, and then present to you the vision that we have for the 28 acres. I want to emphasize that this is a vision, it is a work in progress, this is the first step, and I'm looking for guidance from you and the community members on what this eventual vision will end up in. So as we look at this, I'm sure there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of thoughts, and again, this is our first opportunity to bring about, our first draft, we'll say, of this vision of what South Cloverdale could be. And then listen to the community, listen to the leaders, and then take that and try to develop the best development that we can for the city of Cloverdale and its residents. ICD is a fully integrated development firm, we specialize in all aspects of real estate development. And we focus on expecting change by creating environments that uplift communities, by being sustainable, socially responsible, and presenting economically viable developers. We've developed and constructed over 70 developments throughout the state of California, and we're now approaching close to 5,000 housing units. In doing that, we've secured approximately $2 billion worth of public and private financing to create these housing developments. One of these developments happens to be here in Cloverdale, it's the Cloverdale Family Apartments, it's a 32-unit apartment development that opened in 2017. That is the first lean platinum, net zero energy, multi-family apartment building in all of Sonoma County. We're very proud of that development. And in coming to this community, we've realized many things about it. First off is, we really like Cloverdale, we guys have a great talent and a great city, we want to be part, enjoy being part of that, but we want to continue to be part of that. And with that, it's the Cloverdale House housing needs. You have these, it's a growing city, there's need for all aspects of housing, whether it is in the rental market or the for sale. You have need for open space and for parks, we've heard that from community leaders, we've heard that from folks in the community. And so we started on our quest to try to find a piece of property that could have a real impact on the city of Cloverdale in a positive way, and try to start to meet some of these needs in both the rentals and the for sale market. So as we look to invest in this development, as currently proposed in front of you, this vision is about a $100 million investment that would be into your community over time. And so as you understand, it's a large investment we make into the community, and if we do, we want to do it right. So here we are before you with this first step, it's the pre-annexation, 28 acre parcel out here. We have a vision, we know that you probably all have a vision, what can go there as well. Let's work together and see what can become of it. Hopefully, we can come to an understanding of not only a, not only a development that works for the city, but it's also is economically viable, something that we can actually see come to fruition, that we don't go through this process of planning commission, city council, and then it never gets built. Because that's the hard part about development, it happens in every city, and I'm not, you know, standing up against it, that happened, you guys have seen, you guys come up here and you presented these pretty pictures, and it's still vacant land, and it's sitting out there, and nothing has changed. And we delivered on our promises in the past, we know how to do this, we know what we need to make it economically viable, now it's can we make a fit with the city? Can we work through this process together, make something spectacular? If we look quickly at the 20 acre, 8 acre parcel, I don't want to get into too many of the details, but just a quick layout of what we're dealing with, it's 20 acres, but really we've got a lot less usable space to work with. We've got hillside conservation, which we cannot live upon, but we're hoping, we will be integrating into the property in some way with some trails and open space facilities. What we've also got is this seasonal creek that is part of the property. It is in not the best shape right now, but we've been informed by the state water quality board that it is very important that we not only preserve the creek, but that we enhance it, and that we, through champions and other things. So again, okay, let's take this and make it a pocket, let's incorporate it into this development and make it something that the, that the people who live here can enjoy. So this week we discussed really the, what Kevin alluded to, was the discussions we've been having with the Cloverdale Unified School District. I think most of you are aware, they purchased the 29 acres directly adjacent to the settlement. We've been, we've had multiple conversations with them, these are all conceptual, there's been no formal actions taken by the boards, there's no contractual, contractual obligation, but we have come to an understanding that we are going to come here in a public forum and start talking about what we possibly can do with this property. And conceptually, what we've come to work towards is the school district providing a portion of their property to donate, put towards the public good in order to do some type of perks to this. And then in turn, us being the developers, if our, if our development is approved and we are out there in our construction, then we would help in the financing and the construction of this park. The ideas that have been put out there because of the needs that exist in the community are soccer fields, baseball fields, softball fields, we've got a dog park showing on this conceptual plan, we know that those are all things this community needs. Can we deliver upon all of them? We don't know. What we're trying to do is, is move this vision forward, and this is again, as I said, this first step, but I need your help. Again, I've said this many times, but I want to make it clear, we're going to need your input. And you're going to, hopefully, we're going to foster a relationship where we can understand what you really need, and we can tell you, hey, we can go to here, but we can't go much further, this, it doesn't work. We've put in a lot of work to it, to this point. I'm hopeful that this vision can really be a turning point for South Cloverdale, make a positive impact on the residents. There's a lot of momentum taking place, this development has the potential to transform South Cloverdale by providing new high-quality housing options and open space, it'll introduce a whole new generation of smart growth and design, and that's really what we're here talking about doing. The outdoor space complemented by forward-thinking planning principles, I think will truly foster a sense of neighborhood that will fit in Cloverdale. We understand there's a severe lack of housing here in this community, in this region, and we want to build a shining example of what well-thought-out community-based planning efforts can achieve. So it's kind of high level, I'm here to answer any questions, you can get in, deep into it as you want, but hopefully you can see that this is the vision, and that we want to do something spectacular here, and that now we need to work through the public process, get all your input, and hopefully be able to deliver something that is spectacular.
You look like you want to say something.
Point out that included in your agenda report is reference to two separate properties, the Bumgardner property, but also the Payless Storage property, and this would be an opportunity to invite the other applicant up, if you so desire.
Absolutely.
I mean, certainly you could engage.
Well, actually, I'd like to ask the council, would you prefer to take it one at a time or do you want to just?
We can engage both.
You want to engage both, yes, since it's, since it's, it's really one item. Okay, so why don't we have the Payless Storage person if you are here? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Gina Pocic, 843 Second Street, San Rosa, my name is, I also sit in LAFCO. And we, we're here to say that we thank staff and their recommendation. And in regards to your question having to do with the county and the permits, the property does have a use permit, and there's a dispute with the county relative to the requirement for building permits. And so we're working with the county now. There's a dispute with the county relative to the necessity for certain building permits, and so we're working with the county on that issue. But we support the staff's recommendation, we hope that you can do as well, so we can work this project forward.
Hi, I'm Robert Weiss, I'm the owner of Payless Storage. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
You live on the property?
No, I do not. I'm in Yeltsor, sorry.
Who lives on the property, is it Smitty or?
Smitty lives on the property.
And his wife is the user?
It's his roommate, I'm sorry.
Is she living here?
No.
Oh, he just lives there.
He just managed. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Do you have a microphone issue resolved?
Is the mic working now?
Hello?
Well, there we go. Sorry to the folks at home.
So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so we'll bring it back to the council now, do you have any questions for the applicants? And I'm going to switch over and start, start with these folks this time.
I don't have any questions just yet.
I do, I do. I know, go ahead.
One of the first things I looked at the Bumgardner Ranch master site plan is I was looking for a playground. And it took me a really long time to find a playground, and there's.
Number 14.
A bunch of houses here and apartments, but the playground was right there, I finally found it, kind of buried under a tree. And I was wondering if that, that seems miniscule when there's this many people that are going to be living there with that many children. It just sort of blew me away.
No, I can't find 14, can you point it out?
Yeah, I couldn't for the longest time, but I finally found it.
It's in the multifamily.
Okay, okay, right in there.
Tucked under the trees.
There we go.
No problem. I appreciate that comment. Obviously, open space is important and imperative to our residents, and we will be providing playground equipment. And when we develop a full landscaping plan, we will definitely detail all of those out. This is basically an illustrative representation of a first-pass site plan. We thought it was more interesting than just bringing that black and white, but as duly noted, all of our facilities that we develop, we put playgrounds, barbecue areas, age-appropriate play equipment. And that's one of the things that is going to be a unique and special part of this development, is incorporating, again, these, what I'll call unique environmental features that are around the development, and making those so that they can interplay with the units. And so as we work through these processes, we will put together a detailed landscaping plan, detail out what type of play equipment we will be selling and where those will be.
Yeah, I've had members of our community, and again, I absolutely understand first pass, but since we, we got the think tank open, so be it, right?
Sure, no, I appreciate it.
I've had members of the community approach me about wanting to create an idea of aging in place in Cloverdale, and the way they described that to me is that you could be born here, go to school here, ultimately work here, and then when, when your time comes, pass on here. One of our members of the community during public comment showed some adult exercise equipment or recreation-based equipment. And it just so happened, coincidentally, I returned from a trip to Singapore where I visited family who lives there, and all of their apartment blocks, they have different exercise equipment that the more elderly population can use to stay fit without necessarily having to travel or give out additional expense for a specific gym. So again, with the think tank being open, I just thought I'd plop that in. So again, with the think tank being open, I just thought I'd plop that in there.
I appreciate that. We do have a number of senior developments in our portfolio. Can you hear me? Does the microphone work?
I think it died on us again.
Hello? I'll pop that. We do have a lot of senior developments that we've done throughout the state as well, so we can look to those.
Actually, Linda, does your, is yours working?
Yeah.
Maybe it was, sorry, because we're, this is on video and we really need to have it recorded, so, thanks.
Hello, okay. I'll just step aside. We do have a lot of senior developments that we have developed, and they are within our portfolio. So we do understand the need for different age groups. And that's one of the things with these walking paths and trails as well, that we hope that we can provide, you know, something safe for someone to go out and take a nice walk along this creek. We really look at this creek restoration as a really cool amenity. Again, if you go out there now, it's not much of anything. It's a drainage creek, but we do have to go through the process of enhancing it. So let's make that and incorporate that into our development. If we end up with some more senior-focused units and so forth, that's definitely something that we'll take a look at as well.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Uh huh.
Of course, I'm always concerned about trees. And I'm very concerned because I see that many veldpers bring trees that are not native to the area. They don't do well, and they, they just don't do well, and they don't go with our flora. So I just wanted you to make sure that you include the appropriate vegetation and trees in your development.
I appreciate that. We've got two things that I can say that would be covered by. One is the creek enhancement and restoration has to be approved through a bunch of different state agencies. And one of their primary goals is making sure that they preserve the, the natural vegetative environment that's in place. And number two, we have already engaged in, to an arborist report. The city is going through the process, I believe, of adopting an oak tree ordinance. It was in the general plan. She has reached out to city staff to make sure that this development will be in compliance with that. So I think on those two fronts, we will hopefully accomplish that exact thing in making sure that the, the trees and the vegetation fit. And again, as we go through the process, I think that'll be part of the review. So when we do go back before planning commission and come before you folks, you'll have a chance to review and make sure that it's in alignment with what city code is.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I always have.
I can't imagine.
Something meant fair.
I can't imagine.
First of all, I, I just want to compliment you on the Clover family apartments. I had the opportunity a couple of years ago when you had your open house to walk through. So impressed, you know, with the huge hot water tanks that you have and, and how it just goes through the whole apartment complex there. And so I, I hope that this project comes out as nice as that did. With that being said, I noticed you had some, some tops over the, over the roof in certain sections. Did we have a leak?
Yes, we did. As you can see, the tarps are down. It's been an intense rainy season. But that's one of the things, I'll stand here, we stand behind our product. As soon as we knew that there was a leak, we got our crews out there on top of it. They immediately put the tarp over it, which I know is not the most sightly thing, but in order to dry that out and chase that leak, we, that's what we had to do. Our construction guys were able to get in there, identify it, they've closed it up, they've now got new stucco. We're waiting for the rain to stop now so that we can go repaint. But I do appreciate your, your compliments on the development. We're proud of that development. We're proud of all, all of our developments. And I think if I, if I skipped over this part, that's one of the kind of hallmarks of our, of our existence is we do repeat business. And that's because we stand behind our product and know that you can always come to us if you have an issue. You get my phone number, give us a call, we'll take care of it.
Good, I, I appreciate that. I, I'm just going to talk about the annexation in general. I'm not going to get into the details of what I see in front of me because I know it's just the first glance. But just a quick comment on it, I like the way the trails go into the foothills. I think that's great. I like your partnering with the school district. Hopefully that could come to fruition. It, it does look a little tight when I look at the number of houses on that lot. But like I said, I'm sure we'll get into that later. Speaking of the annexation, I'm in favor of it. I think it's a long time coming. I'm very in favor of the, of the Payless being annexed into the city as well. I, I know that, staff, I know that there might be some issues there. And Kevin, I appreciate your saying that, you know, you work with them coming into the city. And at some point, we'll get those issues cleared up that the county has. And, and the reason I say that is, of course, because it has to be contiguous. And that's a very key annexation as well. So we need to make sure that they both happen. So with that being said, I'm, I'm out of words.
For now, for now.
No, I'm for the day.
For the day.
Just for the hour. So just, just a quick question and a comment. Well, and actually, I just wanted to say that actually I appreciate the density because it's a kind of housing inventory that we don't have a lot of here in Cloverdale. And I think that the demand for that kind of inventory is definitely going up. So, but then a question for you regarding, and maybe it's, maybe it's too, too early, given your relationship with the school district, and you got it heard earlier tonight that the, the chair of the school board is interested in partnering with the city on some, some dual-use projects. Have you had any discussions about how you do see the integration with the facility that they're planning in your neighborhood? Or is it, or if it's too soon?
I don't want to speak on their behalf, but what I can say is, again, conceptually, the idea is to bring a public park to Cloverdale, that this would be for the public. We know that there's a lot of interaction and work that we have to go through, not only with them, but with the city to make these things happen. But if we can be the catalyst for that, they come with the land and we can come and build these, we, I think, as in the spirit of the gentleman that talked earlier, these are the type of partnerships that build communities. This is the type of investment you have to make. And so that's what we're willing to do. And I think that at this point, you've got a motivated group with the school district that sees the future of Cloverdale. They understand their school, their school, they need to expand. But again, they, everything comes down to financial restrictions, as we all know. And so how to make this a reality, we still have to get paper to, you know, pencil to paper and figure it out. But we've got a lot of motivated individuals, and I think we've got at least a great start to a vision. And hopefully, working through this process, we can make it all come to fruition.
Right, and I, actually, I think my next question is for the planning, our planning director. Kind of on this map, I'm assuming that this section right here is, is that the, the wine storage contiguous to the, the buffer zone?
That's Payless.
No, that's Payless Storage.
That's Payless, okay, thank you. All right, now I got it oriented.
For, for reference, the.
And that's all fenced, is that correct? That, that Payless Storage, I remember it's all. And that was my, that was my concern was an attractive nuisance next to this kind of green belt. But that answers my question. That was, there we go, thank you. I think I got the property turned around in my head, so.
If I could just add one quick thing, that's one of the reasons we're hoping to utilize that creek space is to create kind of this natural buffer between that industrial and the residential. We think it, it actually could work really well.
And as long as it's fenced, it is, it, it's not going to be an attractive nuisance. That, that was my concern, so, great. So at this time, are there any more questions from council?
Yeah, actually.
Go ahead.
I'll have to tell you that I was, a few months ago, absolutely dead-set against this project. It's plopped right in the middle of our industrial land, which we need desperately. And once the school bought the property below it, well, actually, south of it then would be considered, I thought, well, what the hell? You know, there's, it's, you've got, you've got the school right below it, you've got the housing there, you've got housing above, that, that Moonlight Street, all that. But still, you've got the issue with industry all the way to the Boulevard and north of you. And it still bothers me that we're losing that. I guess the only thing that would make me feel okay about this, and I'm, I'm going to say that tonight that I'm in favor of the annexation of both of these parcels, after giving it a lot of thought and realizing I was being sort of stubborn. So I just really feel like it's imperative that before any of these kind of projects, any more of these, this happens, that we do put some type of a right to industry. We're mixing zoning districts out here with, you know, I can see bad things happening in, in the future as we go on. So as long as we can get a right-to-industry ordinance on our books, that's got some teeth, I couldn't vote in favor of any of this, but as long as we get that in place, I'm okay. And now that the school's there, and I think it would be great if you add more playgrounds, but I'm not a developer, so.
Thank you, I would like to summarize. I, I have to concur with my colleague, Councilman Brigham. Industry is very important to an age-and-place concept and making sure that we have areas where if someone wants to come in and develop industry, they have some assurances before they spend a significant amount of money to develop a plot of land into a business they want to grow and maybe have as a legacy. So yes, I would like to see, I've, I've heard sometimes D restrictions can have a similar outcome, but I would like to see some options for protecting the surrounding industry and protecting the opportunity for industry to grow within. My last comment is on the density. I have found myself at times very, very reluctant to pack density into anywhere because my mind immediately goes to parking. And this is where I've been stubborn, all right, and I'm, I'm willing to admit this. My mind always goes to parking because we say there'll only be one car, we say the cars will be in the driveway, and the God's honest truth, they are not. As a matter of fact, our storage facility probably wouldn't be able to stay in business if everybody was able to keep their car in the driveway, right? But I say that facetiously, of course. I say that facetiously, of course. But what I have found that I have to kind of try and come around on is it, it's not the same homes of yesteryear. It's not the same buyers as yesteryear. We have young people, young families that are coming in, they don't want a yard they have to maintain, right? They don't, they don't want this huge house that when the roof goes, it's nine grand to get someone out there to put a new layer on.
Twenty-five grand.
Twenty-twenty-five, yeah.
How ignorant I can be, right? So anyhow, but the point that I'm trying to make is, is while I do still have reservations about the parking, because it is a very real concern in this area, you won't necessarily see me go toe-to-toe with you over density because I understand the markets are changing. But please, don't try and sell me that there's going to be one car in every driveway. Please, let's be real with one another while we move forward on this dialogue. Thank you.
And actually, on that, well, I, I, before we, you know, litigate this any further, actually, I want to open it up to the public so that we can get your feedback. So if anyone would like to come forward, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Great. And feel free to ask hard questions.
Shirley Davis. Looking at the, I couldn't see it from back there, but Foothill Boulevard, I'm looking at, let's, let me put the Cal Fire glasses on. You've got a hill behind you, and if there's a fire, you're talking about exit. And if you look at that, you've got that one road that's going to go out to Foothill Boulevard on the west side. I don't think that's a very safe situation. I think you need to have another, a couple of them off at the end.
There are two. There's Sandhome Lane, and then there's Future Right-of-Way.
Yep.
So there are two exits.
So there's.
Or one exit. Sunset Drive.
Actually, could, can you answer the question? I'm sorry.
So there's this one right here, correct?
And then all the way up.
And then all the way up?
Right here.
Here? Oh, okay. That's going, oh, okay, that's a road that's going out.
Yeah, this, this is Foothill.
That's Foothill, right. And this is a dead end, right?
For now.
So you've got two exits.
Jake, do you, can you add some? Jake, can you, can you enlighten us here? Sorry.
Oh, we got it up here.
Oh, he's got it, okay.
Oh, he's got it.
I think David kind of hit, there's this one.
Yeah.
And we have the one coming from Foothill, that we come out on this, it's in that main street. And then we have a Future Right-of-Way going out to Cloverdale Boulevard, and Sandhome Boulevard also goes out to Cloverdale.
Yeah, I'm looking at all those homes that are right in the middle with all those little.
So we would have two.
So if you have them leave.
Two points there of ingress and egress, which is a, I guess, a standard code in law that you have two points. But at the same time, that's where we'll have to go through fire district review. Make sure that we've got all the safety apparatuses in place, the proper fire hydrants, everything. So that's, that'll be part of our review as well. And I appreciate the comment because it's things that obviously, even in Sonoma County, we have to be cognizant of.
Yeah, it's because of that hill behind it, the potential fire. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience?
Hi, just one quick comment, well, two, actually.
Oh, can you just restate your name for the record?
Oh, sorry, again, Matt Glockner. Two quick comments. One is I can appreciate the mix of the density that you guys have here in this, this project after I looked at it before I came to council. It really does look good, and I, and I can totally understand with Councilman Turner's comments, even though they're not what I would look forward to in a home necessarily, what I'm looking forward and what the new generation of homebuyers are looking for is not the same. And so I can totally appreciate those comments. Number two is my family has farmed a ranch at the intersection of Rockpile and Kelly Roads for generations.
Where?
And Kelly, what's that?
Where?
Rockpile and Kelly Road, up behind Lake Sonoma. And as we see the transition of moving this subdivision and intermixing it with the school's property as we move forward, both great projects working together, I really look forward to that. I see some trepidation on my part as far as the disappearance of Kelly Road. So as we move forward with this project, I would see that as those two projects work together, you know, that influence of Kelly Road there is very important to this town's history. And again, history as we move forward, making sure that we can maintain some type of presence of, of Kelly Road there as it is as important to me and many others in its historical nature. I know that a fellow did a presentation on the historical status of the Kelly Road this last year. So again, I just want to make sure that that's part of a small thought as we move forward with the school district and this project of maintaining Kelly Road. In name, in name however it needs to be.
Thank you.
Engineer Brigham, did you have a?
Just a point of clarification, there's.
Can't hear you.
There's two Kelly Roads on the south side. Mic's not on. There's two Kelly Roads there on the south side, and one of these days we'll have better mics. Anyways, there's two Kelly Roads. So the Kelly Road, I believe that you're referring to is the one further south, it would be south of the, of the school property. That's the Kelly Road. There's this other one that's misnamed, and it's really just a ranch road there, and it's, it's also labeled as Kelly Road. So not to confuse the thing, but there's, there's a true Kelly Road and a fake Kelly Road.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, all right, well, seeing none, we'll close it up and we'll, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. And you've been waiting, so.
No, I really think that we as a council need to start thinking more futuristic. Hopefully, there will be less cars, hopefully, they'll be self-driven. And definitely, we need to have a charging station so that the mayor can go charge her car.
I love it. My own advocate.
And I, I do like high density.
Good, great, go ahead.
I'm just going to do the resolution.
You are going, okay, so anything else? Anything else, Alan, Jason? Okay, there's, the one thing I'd add is that this, I mean, I completely agree with Councilmember Brigham. I mean, we are, we talked about doing pre-zoning, and we talked about having a plan for that area, and we didn't get around to it. And so, but I am very happy to see the, the nature of this project, but we're, you're absolutely right, is that we, you know, that we have experienced the perils of being a bedroom community for far too long. And so going forward, we need to go, moving forward, we need to make sure that we are protecting the industrial areas that are left. And make sure that, anyway, it's my belief that, and maybe I am, it's chaotic, but I think that there is a tremendous amount of pent-up development in this town because we don't have adequate commercial areas. We don't have adequate industrial areas. And so I think that going forward, this is a lesson, going, going forward, we need to make sure that, that we have planned for a healthy economic, or a healthy economic future. And that we're also a great place to, to live and raise kids and take dogs to dog parks and all of that lifestyle stuff. So with that, I will, I, I think we're ready to move forward.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer the resolution by title only, but before I do, I too am in favor of density, but it has to be balanced with quality of life. It's got to be the proper density. We don't need people sitting on top of one another in their backyards. City of Cloverdale City Council, Resolution Number 009, 2019, a resolution of the City of Cloverdale, I'm sorry, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, allowing submittal of a pre-zone, zoning and annexation application for future annexation of the Payless Storage, four-point-five-seven acre site located at twenty-eight, twenty-four, three Redwood Highway. of the Payless Storage 4.57 acre site located at 28243 Redwood Highway, AP 117-040-082, 087, and 28, sorry, 28277 Highway 101, AP number 117040086.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You just did that to make me feel better about my mistakes earlier, so you're an officer and a gentleman, Gus. Maybe we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
And Tucker?
Aye.
Would someone like to introduce the other item?
I'll go ahead. Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd like to introduce a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, allowing submittal of a pre-zoning and annexation application for future annexation of the Bumgardner Ranch, 28 acre site located at 21195 Redwood Highway, APN 117-040-053.
And is there a second?
I'd say none.
Okay. Linda, and we have a roll call.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
And Tucker?
Aye.
All right. Actually, why don't we go ahead, and you, I hope you finished your homework before the meeting. Why don't we go ahead and hear your report, and then that way, if you need to, because it is getting, it's getting rather late. If you need to go, you can head home. Great. Great, thanks, Tucker.
All right. So, both girls and varsity, both boys and girls varsity basketball players are in the playoffs. Girls finished first place undefeated. Also, the Mr. Eagle Pageant is February 27. It's basically, like, it's the Citrus Fair Queen thing, but for guys. And it's ran by the high school, and it's kind of like a gag joke thing. I'm in it, so...
Confirms it.
Yeah. But, so, yeah. And then we had a rally yesterday, and also the Citrus Fair. All of our elective classes have products in the fair, which is pretty neat. The food, the Cloverdale High School Food Festival is March 30. It's our second one. It's, last year was a big success, and we're hoping this year will be too. Citrus Fair Queen, we have four people running, three from Cloverdale High School, and one from, I believe, Windsor. Class registration for next year is all wrapped up, which is good. And spring sports practice has officially started, so track, softball, baseball, which are the spring sports. And wrestling season has ended the first year, which was a good success, and they, it looks like a bright future, so...
Great. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Excuse me?
Do you have a question? Sure.
Yes, could you tell us what is the event that you guys are planning in your club that I've participated in?
Business management?
Yes.
Yes, the food festival?
Yes.
So, basically, the business management class is teaming up with our Farm-to-table class, and the maker class, and we're all collaborating together on a festival, where, like, the maker class makes the menus, or the different products, and the farm-to-table class makes the food, and et cetera. And the business management kind of like does the financing and the accounting for each booth, or so on. So it ties in together, and it's kind of a complicated process, but looking forward to it.
I went last year, it was really, it was great.
It's some good food.
It's future finance managers of America, so, yeah. Cool, great. Anything else?
Please remind us, so we can attend.
Yes, I will.
Yes, thank you. We would love to. Great. All right, we'll move on to our subcommittees. Let me grab my report. So the Airport Subcommittee Meeting, our next meeting is June 4, and I'll just give a quick little shout-out. We received our FAA Capital Improvement Program report, we got an update on the airport Pappy Light project. Actually, Mark, do you have anything to add about the Pappy Light? Did we end up closing the... Will you get your microphone?
The construction continues. It's being managed by our CNS, the consultant, and so, they're out there every day.
Is it being slowed down by the rain a little bit?
Definitely being slowed down by the rain. I don't think they've accomplished anything this week.
Okay, so if you hear anything about that, that's, that's what's going on. And then, actually, city manager, do you have the May date in front of you for the airport open house? I wanted to make sure the council is aware of that, and we saved the date, or perhaps we need to just get that out on an email.
I believe it's the first Saturday in May.
Okay, so mark your calendars, and, you know, be sure to, be sure to come out for the open house. Okay, so, it's May 4, thank you. Okay, so, finance and admin, that's me, too. I'll just give a short report. We received the Historical Society's storage pace, storage space request, and sort of plan for moving forward. We received our, the Draft Measure O Report, a draft homelessness strategic plan, and we reviewed the ordinance submitting the city clerk position. So, moving on to planning and community development.
Yes, our next scheduled meeting is this coming Tuesday, February the 19th, is at 4:00 PM, I believe that's at City Hall, is that correct, Mr. Kelly? Thank you. And encourage attendance, if anybody out there. And the Public Works Subcommittee, we met on January the 29th. Big takeaway from the Public Works Subcommittee is, we have a lot, lot going on in the realm of public works, and we have to find the resources for it, but we have some pretty dedicated staff over there, with his team, and everybody else who's involved, doing a great job with that. But, again, if I could make an appeal to anybody watching at home, public works is everything that involves everything about the infrastructure of our city. So please, if you have anything that you'd like to share with us, or just be in attendance, I really encourage you to be there. We have the space for you so far, unless, of course, this appeal reaches all of you, in which case, it'll get a little crowded, but I'm ready for it.
Great.
Thank you.
So joint city fire district.
Meeting was canceled?
Okay. And your next meeting?
As scheduled in June, yes.
Okay, great. And joint city school district, that's you two, if Marta's in it.
Well, we haven't had one yet, and it's been difficult to call it today, because the meeting is the same day.
So, March 18th for the next...
I have a meeting with the superintendent soon.
Great, yeah, so March 18th for the next Subcommittee Meeting. Okay, moving forward, council reports?
Yes, on the 30th of January, as mentioned, we met with the Six Acre folks. This last week, in February, I left Cloverdale, I was in Singapore for the week, and that's about it, guys, I'm sorry. Hopefully, I'll have more for you in the next two weeks. Feel free to email me, folks at home.
Mary Ann, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Marta?
Do I have to read this list?
Oh, no, don't read it, you can just say that you submitted it in writing.
Yes, I did submit a list of activities in writing.
Gus, do you have anything? Yep, I did, I did same, I submitted my list in writing. Okay, so, we're going to skip ahead, is there a legislative report?
No legislative report, Mayor.
City manager, city attorney report? Just welcome back, I guess, is what we have to say. Welcome back to Jose.
I'd like to welcome back our city attorney, Jose Sanchez. It's great to have you back. We have a full plate of items for him to begin reviewing and working on, so we're planning on how to tackle this upcoming fiscal year. A couple of things I did want to report on, is that our finance manager, Susie Holmes, is working on the budget schedule, so we'll be reaching out to you on setting up a date on a goal-setting workshop with you, so that'll be forthcoming fairly quickly, in preparation for the next fiscal year budget. Kind of a prelude, Mayor Bagby and I met with Senior Center Director Ennis today, and they'll probably be likely making a funding request for support in the next fiscal year budget. So that's something they'll be working on, we don't, we don't have a number or anything to share with council at this point, but we expect that will be happening. On the human resource front, we have scheduled interviews with the, for the police chief position, next Thursday, so we have two, two, two very well-qualified candidates, and we look forward to interviewing those two for that important leadership position with the city. And last but not least, just a quick update, as you know, from the weather conditions outside, we've been experiencing a lot of wet weather. We are receiving reports from Sonoma County that they anticipate that lower parts of the Russian River may, may experience some flooding. Obviously, we're going to keep our eyes on it. Here, we did receive notification from the state about, you know, making sure we're prepared, in case our wells get inundated, and our staff, being very proactive that they are, have taken all the necessary precautions to make sure the water tanks are filled, and, you know, in case there's power outages, or that there is any localized flooding in around our wells, so I always appreciate their work in being prepared for that. Also, we do have the sandbag stations available for our residents at City Park, should they need them, and it's certainly advisable, given the amount of water that we're expecting. And then, last but not least, we have dispersed the tickets for the Citrus Fair for our city booth this weekend. Obviously, the fair is going to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we look forward to, and Monday. So we look forward to participating in the parade, coordinating with Councilmember Cruz on kind of a use of a vehicle for some of the announcing of the floats, so that'll be, that'll be exciting. And then, we've got a pretty, pretty, pretty well-scheduled up at the booth. One thing to look for is that we got, we got, we purchased a new booth this year, so we're going to be right up there with the police department this year, and looking good, I think. And we've got some really nice materials, I think, to hand out to the visitors at the city booth this year. So, I hope to see you there, and obviously, feel welcome to hang out.
I have a question.
Oh, go right ahead.
How do I, who do I give the booklet, boxes of booklets from CPAC to, that's going to be setting the booth up?
You can leave those at City Hall, we'll make sure we bring them over.
You guys want to take them tonight? It's raining.
Ah, come on! Linda, is there room in your little cart?
Leave that, leave that.
I'll help you, I'm going over to City Hall.
But I can show you where they are.
I'll carry them, I'll carry them. I'm going to City Hall, so...
When?
It's going to be raining probably till now, until the fair starts.
It's going to be raining until the end of time, so, I'm happy to take them over there tonight.
Police Department, obviously, will also have a booth right next, right next to the city booth, so we'll be there together.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, David, if I could request a couple of those tickets, my name's not on the sign-up sheet, but I'll be popping in, working that booth. Usually, I do Saturday afternoons, and I usually do Sunday evenings, so...
Okay, I think we have quite a few sign-ups for Saturday afternoon.
Oh, okay. Well then, don't worry about it.
But yes, I would be happy to...
You could just put them in my box, that'd be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other council direction on future agenda items?
I wanted to make a small suggestion here, if it's appropriate.
Certainly.
And this is about potentially moving the student report up to a standing presentation, so we can afford them the opportunity to speak early and maybe have a bit of their evening back. I must admit, I did not necessarily foresee tonight being one of our three-hour meetings.
Yeah.
But I just think as a, as a point of just maybe courtesy to our student liaison, maybe a standing presentation, so I just wanted to make that suggestion.
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And I also insist that the report by the students should be more meaty.
Okay.
I mean, beyond the sports. And they do so very many things in that school, they have so very many programs, and I think that the public needs to know.
Well, since you're on the school liaison, would you like to take care of that?
I guess I would have to speak to them.
There you go, I would like to, I would like, I would like to put you on that.
I mean, look at, you know, the explanation about the food fair.
Yeah.
That's really nice, and people don't really know about it, they just say, "We have a food fair," that's it.
Yeah, and I went, I went last year, and it was fantastic. They also, the Farm-to-table group also provided the catering for the sculpture review board, and they just do an amazing job, so anything that we can do to promote that program would be great.